Testing. Okay, if you are in the audience, I would ask you to have a seat. We are going to get started here very shortly. I'm so excited that y'all are here, especially our students who have shown up incredibly well today. Looking fantastic, looking charged, I love it. The board meeting is in order in a moment as SBS TV will begin broadcasting. Give us a second to get situated here and make sure all our directors are mic'd up. Wonderful. Okay, this is President Hershey. I am now calling the December 15th, 2021 Regular Board Meeting to Order at 4:20 PM. This meeting is being recorded. We would like to acknowledge that we are on the ancestral lands in traditional territories of the Puget Sound Coast Salish people. We will now go into the roll call. Ms. Wilson Jones, please call the roll.
Vice President Hampson?
Here.
Director Harris? Director Rankin, not yet. Director Rivera Smith?
Present.
Director Sarju?
Here.
Here.
Director Song Marit?
Present.
And President Hershey.
Yo. Okay, we are holding today's meeting in a hyper format with directors and staff and members of the public here in person with remote access also available through SBS TV. By broadcast and streaming on YouTube and by phone, consistent with the Governor's proclamation on open politic meetings. For those joining by phone, please remain muted until we reach the testimony period and your name is called. I will now turn it over to Superintendent Jones for his comments, which will include a budget work session today. This work session is scheduled for 60 minutes. Public testimony is scheduled to begin at 5:30 today. Superintendent Jones, take it away.
Thank you, President Hershey. Given that this is our last board meeting of the year, I want to thank everyone for pushing through a challenging 2021. That's right. I appreciate the dedication and the commitment of all parties involved, from the board to the classroom, and in particular, students. You know, we will continue to meet the challenges head-on, whether these be threats or call for wellness. We are going to continue to be responsive. As we talk about student outcome governance, I want to thank the board for your enthusiastic and challenging conversation and learning last week that we talked about during our progress monitoring. I'm going to keep my comments brief and hand it over to Deputy Gannon and Assistant Superintendent of Finance Joel Lynn Bergy, who are going to lead us in a discussion of the 2223 budget. Deputy Gannon?
Thank you, Dr. Jones, and good afternoon, members of the school board. I'm going to hand it over to start this presentation and discussion to Assistant Superintendent Bergy. She will kick us off and we'll proceed through work session. As always during a work session, we will be working to present information, but we invite you to ask questions throughout at any point, so.
Evening, Directors. Joel Lynn Bergy, Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance. So you'll see four things on the agenda slide. We'll talk a little bit about the budget development calendar and give a couple of updates. We'll have a participatory budgeting process update. Again, we are referring to that as PB. We'll talk a little bit about ending fund balance details for 2021. That's going to be an important part of the conversation tonight. And then continuing conversations about the 2223 budget development. So the goals for the work session are aligned with the agenda. So on the budget development calendar, we are at December 15th. We have another work session scheduled for the week that we return, January 5th. And during that work session, because of the tight time turnaround, we will be talking about the WSS changes. We'll ask Dr. Eric Anderson to leave that discussion about changes to the equity tier methodology that the WSS committee is moving forward. And then we'll also have a report, a PB report, on results from the conversations that we've been having with them this year. And then the last bullet, we will probably not include on this agenda. It will probably mostly be focused on the WSS changes and the PB recommendations. We will turn to the rest of that conversation on January 19th. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Linda Sebring.
Good evening, Linda Sebring, Budget Director. So I'm going to go over briefly a status update on where we are with our participatory budgeting process. We have some bullets on this slide about we've gone through a variety of meetings with our community on our participatory budgeting process. We started the conversation with bringing forward some of the items we were talking about last year for participatory budgeting as we continue to evolve and expand this process. So our initial conversation with the community was on looking at ethnic studies further, American Indian studies, Black studies, restorative justice, and Policy 6114 was a new add this year to add to the community conversation, which is our policy on gifts, donations, grants, and fundraising proceeds. So as we went through these conversations with the community, we started off with a brief overview of the budgeting process timeline, where the district gets its funds and expenditures, to do some level setting to help them understand where, why, and when the district made certain decisions in its timeline. And as we got in further, they wanted to focus on two of the areas that we brought forward. So they have spent most of the conversation on the policy about gifts, donations, and grants, and restorative justice. The other ones at this time, they did not want to address it this year. So that's what you'll see in the final report that's coming out in January. We've made some significant changes and improvements, I think, from last year's PB. We have a webpage, dedicated external webpage in the Budget Office for Participatory Budgeting. We put a lot of our documents and backup details so that if community members who are not involved in the actual conversations can look at some of the details and see what's going on, and as these reports come out, we will also be posting those to that same webpage. So that's where we're at with participatory budgeting right now.
I'll just add a couple of comments. So one of the things that was very important to the group is that they were able to work at their own pace. So one of the recommendations, I'm not sure, but could come forward, is that they need more time to work on the policy. So they really wanted to gain a deep understanding with COVID. When we talked about this before with WSS participation, it was the same for PB participation. A lot of folks just really had limited capacity, and so we wanted to meet them where they needed to be met. And they needed to tell us how they wanted this process to work and what worked for them. And so the results that you'll be hearing in January are really reflective of that. The other thing is that we're very conscientious that we don't want this to be a tokenized effort. We want to keep slowly and deliberately expanding and improving on the PB process because we don't know everything. There's not a lot of other PB processes across the country to model after. So we're learning together, and we may have some resets, we may make some mistakes, but we're continuing to move forward, and we've had really good feedback from both the students and the community members. Any, any questions about PB?
Any directors have questions? Director Rivera Smith?
Hi, thank you. I think you got the update there. What are our participation numbers for the participatory budgeting committee?
So we started, we had about 10 people say that they wanted to join, and we had, I think, two or three students who wanted to join. And those timelines kind of offset, so the students were in their own group, talking about their own things that were important to them. And I think the conversations with them were a lot about restorative justice, and that's where they wanted to focus. We've had probably four or five different adults regularly attend, so community members regularly attend the meetings. Again, we had one person say, "Things have changed. I can't continue." So just some things like that, but the input from our consultants' perspective as a data scientist is that we're having really meaningful conversations and really digging into and getting their feedback.
Directors? Please continue.
All right, moving on, Linda will talk about the 2021 fund balance details.
Thank you. So this is rather a complex subject. And we just started out with a heading, you know, why is, if we have a growing fund balance, why is there a budget issue? And we had anticipated when we were building the budget for 2223 that we would end this year with a significant ending fund balance. There were a lot of reasons for that, and many of them were strategically planned. So as the first bullet says, our ending fund balance grew by $37 million at the end of August compared to the prior year. We have a total ending fund balance of $186 million, and we have a slide after this that's going to get into more details. But at the high level, $39 million is the Board Economic Stabilization account. I know everybody knows what that number is. We've had several conversations. That's equivalent to 4% of the district's expenditures from the last fiscal year. So the Board policy is to have between 3% and 5% of total expenditures. If we drop below 3%, there must be a repayment policy. I'll just remind, some of the new members may not be aware of that, we're now sitting at 4%, which is 1% higher than the minimum, right in the middle. $45 million is restricted funds. So these are not funds that we can just, you know, choose to spend one way or another. These are limited to grants. There's some grants where they, we get paid in advance. So we get a grant awarded to the district, they give us the money, and then as we do the activities and demonstrate we've done the activities, we earn the money. If we don't earn the money, we'd have to return it. So it's like a prepaid revenue. There's, we have a legal reserve, we have school underspends from year to year, and we allow the schools to carry those funds forward for a variety of areas. That, those all total about $45 million. $33 million of what's in the ending fund balance was money the school board set aside at the end of 2021 to help fund the current school year. So there's money in that ending fund balance. Fund balance is a point in time at the end of August that is basically revenues that we are spending expenses through, against today. That's $33 million. That came from two different sources. One was planned savings in 1920 of $21.8 million, and another one was capital fund transfers. It also happened in 2021 of $10 million. So the final major amount is $66 million, and this is a number that you guys have been seeing in our conversations of Scenarios A and Scenario B. The $66 million is made up of $55 million that we ended last year in our fund balance and that we're proposing to use to help balance 2223, and $10.6 million of ESER backfill continuity of operations that we are also proposing to use out of the ending fund balance to balance 2223. So once all is said and done of that $186 million, we have $3 million left that we are putting a pin in and saying maybe a reserve against enrollment in the fall, or it would be an unreserved, not committed amount of funds. I know I'm covering an awful lot, and $186 million is a lot of money, so I'll pause.
Directors? Director Rankin?
Thank you, and thanks for breaking this down. That's a great way for people, you know, looking at a fund balance of $186 million, that seems like we have a ton of money just sitting there, and it's actually not the case, so thank you for that. My question is about the last item, $10.6 million ESER backfill. Is that to back? Let me understand that. Where's that coming from and what it's backfilling?
Certainly. So in last school year, we made a, had a conversation about using ESER funds to continue to employ staff who at the time may not have been working since we were working remotely. So we spent about $30 million on the ESER. This is where these things start to connect. $30 million on the ESER fund, where we took people off of the general fund expenditures and moved them on to the federal fund and kept them employed. Of that $30 million, a big chunk of that was spent to help with last year's enrollment loss. $10.6 million was extra that we put towards our planning, having conversations to put forward towards 2223. Does that help? There's two pieces of this. It was 30 million on ESER. Slide six from last month on the ESER presentation.
I get, my, so my confusion is, are we backfilling from our fund balance into ESER? Or is ESER backfilling? Thank you. That makes a lot more sense. I was wondering, why would that not be?
No.
A good use of those.
The shifting of, of staff onto the ESER fund freed up general fund dollars that we're bringing forward in the ending fund balance and proposing to use to help balance 2223.
Okay, thanks.
Director Sarju?
Thank you. For those on the phone, Michelle Sarju, pink glasses, wearing something red today, and a colorful headband. For my edification and probably others in the audience, what does ESER stand for?
Elementary Secondary School Emergency Relief. It's an acronym. It relates to the federal emergency funds that were, we, the school district was given three different fund sets of a grant to help us with ESER expenses and student outcomes.
Any other questions at this time? Okay, thank you.
So the next slide is, we thought we'd put this in a visual, and I hope you have a color copy. It's harder to see in black and white.
We do not, but we do have one up on the screen.
Excellent. So we're, you know, color costs a lot more money. So.
How poignant.
We're in finance. So what we wanted to show people is, it, non-accountants have, it's challenging to understand what a fund balance is compared to deficits and revenues and expenditures. So what you're seeing here is different slices that make up the fund balance. So you see two historical years, 1819 and 1920. And again, 2021, the year we just ended, is in the middle, so it shows we've had, the fund balance has grown. What we wanted to do to display this was, all things being equal, 2122 is not going to drop significantly. The ending fund balance will not drop significantly. And what that means is, that $66 million we just discussed, it will be passing through this year's budget to wait at the end of the year in the fund balance to fund expenses next school year. So it's not going to automatically drop between now and next August. So if everybody's like, "Oh, you know, you said there was a real challenge," and, but we ended another year, and we have a large surplus. That's not how your savings account works. You get your paycheck, you know, here, but you know you got to pay all these bills. You've already committed it. So that's why I added in 2223 to show, all things being equal, no major changes in legislative policy or practice for district activities, the fund balance would basically drop in half when we got into 2223. And that is a fairly dramatic impact that we would have. That was the purpose of this slide. And then if you go to the next slide, this is the picture in words. And it shows a little bit more of the first line being the Economic Stabilization Fund over these years. Again, the first two years, first three years are actuals, and the final two years are potentials. So if we don't use the econo, or if we do use the economic stabilization to help balance 2223, well, it will still be in there at the end of August. It will then be paying for next school year's bills. So I've held everything constant from restricted funds, school, and central carry forward, but you start to see the usage at the end of 2122, it doesn't show up again, that $55 million, the $10.6 million, and the reserve for the fall enrollment. The assumptions are those funds will be consumed in 2223 again. This is helping people try to understand why a large fund balance right now does not preclude the fact that we are still on a bad trajectory. And that is ending fund balance.
I, I just want to say that this is, there are a lot of moving pieces. So even when Linda and I discuss it with our team and our staff, we have lots of questions just for each other because there are so many complexities to how this interacts with funding and then the, the structural deficit. So I just want to, I just want to say, it, it's not just that maybe you don't, it's not simple. It's not simple for any of us.
One thing I wonder in terms of presentation, whether it's this slide or the prior slide, is the extent to which it would be helpful to show proportionality or meaning the fund balance and the breakdown of the fund balance categories over time relative to either overall revenues or expenses, or something else.
So in a percentage type of format? Yeah, let us think about how we could display that in a way that it would be intuitive and people would be able to say, "Oh, that's what that means."
Yeah, I'm, that may not be the answer, but what this brings up for me, and I thank you for that explanation in this presentation, is just if another tweak might even provide more clarification.
That's, that's helpful.
I wanted to also note, in terms of, I've neglected to mention on the prior slide, the requirement to pay back our rainy day funds is one that is a state-level requirement, correct? That we have to have a plan in place. Is that correct?
It's our own policy.
It's only our own policy. The state doesn't have any requirement for a rainy day fund?
Let me say it this way. The state does not have an RCW or a WAC that, or a Washington Administrative Code rule, administrative rule that talks about what the rainy day fund should be. However, there are standards in the industry, and so we are audited to those standards. So two things happen. OSPI runs a financial indicators about your financial health, and they have financial health indicators that we started a long time ago there, and they have continued that work, and it shows when a district's getting into financial trouble. So one, that happens. Two, the auditors come and they look at your fund balance, and they look at what's sitting in your reserve account. And if it drops below 3%, typically they have a comment. If it drops worse than that, then the comment may be accelerated.
So at minimum, the state auditor is going to make a comment on our report? And the state will take notice?
Not until we actually drop below the 3% in our policy. Then they will say, "To follow your own policy, where is your plan if you drop below 3%?"
Right. Okay. I just wanted to, it was, I appreciate you adding that additional clarification. I think it's important that folks hear that and are reminded of that. And in terms of the, I mean, I don't know why you didn't just do an animated demonstration of the inflow. I'm kidding. To clarify it. But the other thing that I know is relevant is the timing. We're having to make decisions about the budget and plan for what we're going to have next year, not knowing what relief the state may or may not give to us, and the sort of overall volatility of funding is quite extreme, as I do believe that graph demonstrated that. And that's what makes me think of the wanting to look at it proportionately to confirm that in fact that's true even when we contextualize it with the relative to whether it's revenues or expenses or how we might demonstrate that. So the, as you said, I think that the timeframe at which we're looking at these fund balances doesn't match up with what the ultimate upcoming need for those items is. I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Director Harris?
True. When you said animate, that was actually a segue to what I was going to ask. I'm wondering whether or not we have some high schoolers that are studying animation and some of the ways to present data more graphically. And hopefully as well to our state legislators, since we've got a short session, if I recall correctly, coming up. And, and you know, reading, reading any number of media, including social media, what, what are these guys complaining about? They've got millions and millions and millions of dollars. And I'm wondering whether literally showing how this moves wouldn't assist us, frankly, in marketing where we're at and what our needs are, and then throwing all the different variables in there with, with a screen of question marks at best. A number scare people. We know this already. We also know that a number of the folks on the state legislature are not necessarily cognizant of all the various needs and variables, and I'm, I'm wondering whether that couldn't be a high schooler's capstone project or an internship with Eric Anderson in your department.
Thank you. Director Harris? I will do my best to look into it. I'm not going to be able to make any promises on that, but I, but I hear you. And the additional federal dollars that we And the additional federal dollars that we received in relief, it, it all makes it, it just adds a whole nother layer of complexity about what could you have possibly done with a hundred and forty-seven million dollars? And, and why isn't it able to solve all of the problems with the budget? So we continue to work on that. You'll see another update on the ESER dollars in January as well. As we continue to update our budget projections, particularly for health and safety. I just want to continue to say that that remains a projection that moves on us.
Director Rankin.
Thank you. Two questions. Are in, so, so we have maintained a fund balance for future expenses so that we're not in a completely disastrous place in twenty twenty-three, or twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three. Are there other districts in the state that have not carried over a fund balance? And are they in dire straits? And what, do, do you know, like, does that, I'm just thinking about in context, especially if people think like, well, you have all this extra money. And that we're actually using it to plan for what we project as a problem that will need to be solved. For districts that maybe haven't had the ability to do that or haven't, or have chosen not to do it, I'm wondering if there's a conversation at the state of how to solve that. I mean, if that has an impact on our outlook. And then the second question is also, I thought it was prefiled, but I was just looking in my phone and I couldn't find it. I thought that there was a prefiled bill for enrollment stabilization. Oh, there is, okay. And should that pass? This would then look pretty different?
It would look pretty different by about thirty million dollars.
By what?
By about thirty million dollars. That's probably our high watermark. Let me just say that. That, that's, that's the current estimate from SPI. It was a long road for a bill to, to go down. To get there.
Okay. And then just to put maybe a finer point on that, that money from the state has already been budgeted for districts based upon enrollment because last year was the budget year. So should it pass, that money wouldn't have to be found or discovered. It's already budgeted for school districts in spite of enrollment decline.
That's correct. Both, both last years, so we're under an enrollment statewide last year in twenty twenty-one and this year. Then that money was already in the state budget. It's sitting there, it's available for them to provide.
Thanks.
To your first question, I just want to say that there are districts who are in trouble for a number of reasons. We, we roll with the results of our fund balance growing when we know that we're saving money for an, an out year, right? So we've been pretty, we've been good about that as a district. It does make people wonder in the current year, why, why do we have these budget cuts? You have money sitting there. And so it's, it's a way for us, as we've gone through time, to try to level set and not take on too many problems in one year, right? But there are the districts, Tom Water, it's been in the paper, it's not a, it's not a secret. They have a significant problem where they don't think that they can end the year with anything just about. So there are districts that are there. And, but there's a process statewide for state takeover. So the state's not going to come and save them from themselves. But that's not how it works.
They're not going to save them, they're going to relieve them of.
They would go into what's called budgeting receivables and go into binding conditions with OSPI, with OSPI oversight.
Which still doesn't provide any, necessarily any extra dollars for the expenses, okay. And even with the third, should the thirty million dollars come to us, hopefully with enrollment stabilization, that, I'm just, to stay out loud, we still have the need to use the fund balance to mitigate against just operating costs. Just that it costs more to provide education than we're, than we're funded for every year. So that thirty million dollars helps, but it doesn't address the larger picture of kind of chronic and ongoing underfunding.
That would be a fair statement.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you for that healthy discussion, great question, Director Rankin. Take it away.
Thank you, President Hershey and Director Rankin. That was an excellent unrehearsed segue into the next portion of the work session. Uh, I'm going to spend a couple of minutes going over some slides previously presented to the board in the work sessions. I think it benefits everyone to review and understand the consistency of the materials we're bringing forward. And with two new directors on the board, I also think it will be helpful to them to orient where we sit. As we have talked about potential approaches to our budget shortfall, not just in the coming year, but also in the years subsequent. The out years also have structural challenges. So this slide represents, it is consistent with other presentations we've made. We start with, in the upper left-hand corner of that slide, an estimated shortfall in the coming fiscal year of seventy-eight million dollars. The lines that follow bring into view at a high level those things that are potential relief to address that budget shortfall, as well as the known deficits that we face. So I'll walk you through them briefly. First line you see there is the ending fund balance, as we've been discussing, the fifty-five million dollars. You also see the ten point six brought forward from a prior fiscal year using ESER funds to again, bring some relief potentially to our challenge. The enrollment loss is the next line. So we've been consistently since the early fall projecting enrollment loss at twenty-eight million dollars. Uh, and that continues to be our best estimate, though that as well can shift and fluctuate. The next line, the Economic Stabilization Fund, that represents the full amount. So that is the four percent that Linda referenced earlier. In theory, all of that could be brought to bear on our fiscal challenge. We have, since the early fall, been signaling that we could bring ten million dollars forward from our capital program to offset the shortfall. The next line, six million dollars in reductions to central administration and district programs. This is a high mark, what is at least conceivable were we to position ourselves against a convention or a benchmark for large districts. That six million dollars represents the total amount that we are over that benchmark. And so we could norm ourselves back to a level by cutting six million dollars of central administration. The next line, the three million dollars, the, the negative three million dollars is represented there as an offset because we would want to reserve some funds to invest in new priorities, whether that's in response to emerging needs that the district might, might have, or the good ideas that come forward in the budgeting process. And then lastly, at least in enumerated lines, we have proposed a five million dollar deficiency, were we to make some substantial revisions to our transportation program. So there's a couple of slides that our colleague Ashley Davies will speak to in some detail later. So at the conceptual level, all of those balance out to ninety-four million dollars, which were at all to come forward and we were to be successful in initiating all of those, we would overcome the seventy-eight million dollar gap in the coming fiscal year. So I'll speak to some more of that detail in subsequent slides. Like to spend just a moment reminding everyone, the board, but also the audience, of where we sit with enrollment. So this blue line here depicts a fluctuating enrollment over the last several years, going back to academic year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. It's fairly obvious to everyone that there's been an enrollment decline in recent years, largely if not exclusively attributed to the pandemic. But in reality, that has an impact on our funding and our budget. So we've highlighted here two years in particular. Academic year two thousand twenty-one, we anticipated at the start, enrollment of fifty-four thousand, but we saw actual enrollment of just over fifty-two thousand. Similarly, in the current academic year, we anticipated and budgeted for enrollment at fifty-two thousand, but we are experiencing enrollment at fifty thousand. So there's a great deal of detail and complexity that underlies this simple line diagram. But the takeaway that I want to emphasize is, right now, our district is staffed for enrollment at fifty-two thousand students. But we have only fifty thousand students participating in the educational endeavor. This is not to say that we are overstaffed, understaffed, or rightly staffed. It is based on our models, we are staffed at a level that is not consistent with our enrollment. And if this situation persists into the coming year, we have to confront as a district whether we remain consistent to our staffing models and bring our staffing levels down to match enrollment. If we do this, or when we do this, this will feel like a reduction in staffing levels at the school level. Because if we do that, it will be staffing reduction. But it will be a staffing reduction to a level consistent with our enrollment. So as we talk about large fiscal numbers and dollars that we could potentially save, I don't want to lose sight that right now we are staffed at a level that is inconsistent with our enrollment, even if we hear from our colleagues throughout the district that there are not enough staff to do the necessary work by the supports and instruction to our students. So this is one of the hard questions that we will have to wrestle with. The aim of this presentation is not to talk about how to do that. That will come in our subsequent session in January when we talk about the waiting staffing standards. I want to continue to emphasize this point, that this is a hard decision that we have to confront in the very near. So I will pause there and let either Assistant Superintendent Burge add additional comment or entertain any questions that board members may have.
I've got a question. Do you all have a sense of the delta between, or rather, how much we're talking about and the difference between fifty-two thousand and fifty thousand in terms of enrollment? Like, what is that number? And so like, what is the difference in funding that we would see versus us planning for fifty-two and actually having fifty? Is that that thirty million dollar mark?
Eight million dollars.
Twenty-eight million dollars. So in order for us to be staffed at a level that would be consistent with what our enrollment actually is going into the out years, we would need to figure out a solution within our house to reduce our expenditures by thirty million dollars if we were trying to staff to the level of fifty thousand students.
That's correct. President Hershey and if the board would like, we can go to the next slide, which offers a rendering of what that would look like in terms of overall staffing. I don't mean to jump ahead.
Go ahead, Director.
Thanks. I, I just wanted to add for context, because folks who might be new to this conversation might think, well, if that's the difference between our formula and the number of students, why don't we just change our formula? And so I just wanted to, to say that we're funded by the state on a per pupil basis. The state has a formula for funding school districts, and it's based on the number of students that you have. And then once districts get that funding, they have other formulas and make decisions. And, you know, in our case, it includes like levy dollars that, that make up a lot of funding that are not, that's not covered by the state for basic education. Um, and that that formula is a way to equitably distribute funds to the buildings. But the reason that this matters in terms of our budget situation is that the state will be providing us funding based on our actual number, not the old, not, not our current number. So I just, that was some context I just wanted to make sure was out there.
I'm sorry to kind of roll forward a few slides. So I just want to make sure that I understand this. Our previous conversation was about taking money from our fund and kind of save it to kind of provide some stabilization around a potential deficit in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And that, and that estimated deficit is seventy-eight million dollars. Is that correct? And so I'm just kind of looking at slide eighteen, I'm sorry to kind of roll forward. I'm just trying to understand the flow of the money. That revenue number in twenty-two, twenty-three, is that based on the lower projected enrollment number or the, or kind of a higher enrollment number?
The on button, tricky little things. So what, the way we build our budget is, we start out very high level and we roll the budget forward. So we take everything we've got this year and roll it forward, with the exception of the school funding formula. That is reset, it's zero-based. So as soon as they give us enrollment from the enrollment department, which will come to the budget office about mid-February, we run that through our formula and that goes out to the schools. So right now in the budget that makes that seventy-eight million, it's a placeholder. We know, uh, cost of living increases based on the state is two point one percent. Number may change. So we roll those things forward, medical changes forward, contract, major contract changes forward. So we're rolling all those expenses forward. And also to get to the seventy-eight, you have to take out all that one-time money that helped get us through this year. So there, it, as Jolynn mentioned, it is complicated. And depending on what comes in the enrollment will be what goes out in the WSS, basically. It pretty much evens out. We usually call it money in, money out. But it is pretty close to the number of kids that we get, and then we run the formulas, and then what goes out through our school funding formula. So if enrollment was held at a high number, we would hopefully be also calculating that revenue for those high number. Let's use it what the budget office does. There's not ever been in my world a discrepancy between, you know, budget to have revenue for fifty-two thousand and only budget to roll fifty thousand through the model, or vice versa. Does that answer your question? We haven't, we haven't decreased it yet. We have not decreased the enrollment yet.
So the seventy-eight million deficit is reflective of a higher enrollment number, just for.
And a higher revenue set of numbers for that.
So there are potential.
Actually, excuse me, it's based on the four-year forecast, which is flat. It would be a flat revenue, or a flat enrollment. So it's, it's too high right now.
So the potential for the deficit is even more than seventy-eight million?
It is a potential to be higher. Our, that's, the data I'm putting together right now is, our forecasted deficits over the last four years, we've always come out higher, a higher deficit than what we forecasted. So it can potentially go up. We usually try to get the majority of items in there, and as we discussed, legislative action could make it go down. So there's, there's some big things that can still be moving on the budget. It's just the timing of them. And when schools have to make their decisions and we have to make major budget decisions.
Can I just add one piece of clarification, Director Silver? The revenue and expenditure and the disparity and the structural deficit between them, they are relational. So no matter what our enrollment is, it looks like this. So we're not ever getting enough revenue regardless of what our enrollment number is because of the accompanying expenditures that come with that. So they're, they're really relational and, and that doesn't change as far as it continues to drive a deficit.
That's very helpful. Can I ask a second question? So the, the twenty-eight million kind of forecasted because of the enrollment drop in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Is that reflective of, in our, I guess, what is that number?
So it is the amount, it is the value of revenue related to the enrollment number, the actual versus the budgeted enrollment number. And it's made of, of two components. One is a current year state allocation revenue component. And then there's some smaller piece of out year levy revenue component, where we collect revenue, uh, we collect our levy revenue based on a one-year lookback for enrollment. So there's a small piece of it that is, that would come in the twenty-twenty-three school year. So there's a small piece of it that is, that would come in the twenty-twenty-three school year. But the twenty-eight million is the overall revenue impact to the actual enrollment number being different than budget.
So that, I just wanted to make sure I understand this. The expenditures have already been spent, because we're already in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and we're no longer able to count on the revenues to have covered those expenses.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct. Now, let me just say this. There's always some underspend that happens in this district, and we account for that down in the spreadsheet where you see the twenty-million-dollar number. And we update those estimates as we go along. But things happen, right? We don't always have every position filled. You have eleven thousand positions in this district. Not everyone is filled at every moment, and not everybody spends every dollar that was budgeted. And some of those dollars are grant dollars, so there's, it's the whole thing.
Director Harris?
Cue. I am looking at Slide number twelve. And concerned about the blank spaces on that chart. Also concerned about the transportation return to three tiers. And we've talked a fair amount about that in October and November. Also, with respect to the research that the three tiers was based on. And in SSC and I last week, Director Anderson was going to be checking with Children's Orthopedic. He was surprised to hear my question, to find out what the results of that study was that we were told about for several years. And I appreciate that there's an enormous amount of work being done to fill in these blanks. But can you, and I appreciate as well, we're going to have a more deep-dive conversation in January, but can you talk about what senior staff and what some of the conversations leading up to that are, and whether we can count on some read-aheads for the, in January, or what factors are going into these recommendations, as opposed to a slide in a fairly dense budget presentation?
Thank you, Director Harris, for your question. Let me try to answer it this way. As it relates to transportation, from all ends, whether it's the study that you reference, with the potential impact through this proposed approach to greater efficiencies, our colleague Ashley Davies will be speaking to that in just a moment with some detail. Whether that's a full read-ahead, or whether there's additional interest that the board has in a deeper dive, I'd like to ask if we could hold that until after her presentation, because I think there is some good information that will lend some clarity for now. The, I'd like to comment on the blank slides or the blank lines on this slide. These are concepts that we could also engage to address either near or longer-term shortfalls. We have chosen, at least at this point, to not put placeholders on these lines, because these would have such a dramatic, or potentially dramatic, impact on the educational communities. So for the benefit of the new directors, the K-eight grade span adjustments, that would be to consider truncating the K-eight model into the conventional elementary and middle school model and reap the budget savings associated with that. The restructure of admin for non-traditional schools would be an attempt to find savings in that type of reduction. Other small school adjustments and other reductions to school funding allocations are really about changing the number of schools that we would have within the district and reducing our costs and overhead allocations. Clearly, that would have impact on community. We are not taking those off the table, because if our situation persists, we will have to confront those hard choices. But right now, given our timeframe and given some of the other options that appear available, choosing not to enter placeholders for those at this moment. I hope that answers some of your questions. I feel I may have missed the middle part of your question.
I guess, to have them there, to have them blank, strikes fear in my little heart. And if we are going to address them, then can we have a commitment that we will have a real deep dive and read-aheads and the backup before numbers are put in there?
Director Harris, my simple answer is yes, of course. And I hope that with the balance of this presentation, we'll indicate, at least in the near term, we won't need to engage these four fearsome line items. We don't want to put fear in your heart. We do have some ideas about how to avoid these in the near term and engage with community and the board and stakeholders to figure out how to address the shortfall through a different means. So if I can come back to that later, but I, of course, welcome your question at the end of the presentation if I've not satisfactorily addressed it. Any other questions before we move on? Please continue. All right. So picking up the thread, I would like to explain this slide by way of format, and then give explanation as to Scenario A and B, again, for the benefit of the newest members to the board. The estimated gap column, where you see the seventy-eight million, the line items underneath, that corresponds to the prior slide, and that represents the full ninety-four million dollars of potential to address the shortfall. Scenario A and Scenario B are substantially similar, but for the relief that would come from the state. So I'll walk you through these, because there are two other minor adjustments. The first adjustment comes on the line Economic Stabilization Fund. In Scenario A, we would propose to spend the one percent figure of our stabilization reserve, bringing that balance down to the minimum under-board policy of three percent. So we're at four percent. Bringing it down to three percent, we would use nine million dollars of reserve. The next figure that differs from the estimated amount column is the reduction to central admin. So I'll say that any reduction to central admin will be difficult to pursue and implement, and it will constrain our ability in many ways. But considering a two-million-dollar figure is, at least in the view of senior staff, more achievable in the near term than trying to go for the full six million dollars. We do not yet have detail to bring forward on what that two million dollars would look like. So to Director Harris's general concern, we don't have those answers yet, but we are working at the senior staff level to figure out how those could be brought forward, and that will be a topic in our January workshop. The other figure that varies is the added cost for new work or new priorities. So we move that up to a five-million-dollar figure, knowing that there are many things that the district wants to prioritize, including how we pursue and advance the strategic plan, or recently, the goals identified in the Student Outcome Focus Governance Model. So with this, we would have a shortfall in our budget of roughly eighteen million dollars. But if we were to get full relief from the state on our enrollment shortfall, that's the twenty-eight million dollar figure, we would find ourselves in a scenario where we would have a surplus, or at least a conceptual surplus. The nine-point-seven million dollars there roughly equates to what we would have used from our Economic Stabilization Reserve. I'll pause here to say that Scenario A, we believe, is our most pragmatic and realistic approach to our budget challenge, sitting in December and looking at the budget calendar of January, February, and March. Knowing that the legislature is about to come into session, and knowing that a bill has been at least filed as a placeholder of what could be brought to school districts throughout the state. Scenario B, then, by contrast, is the reality if that were not to happen. If the relief from the state did not come forward, or did not come forward in the full measure, so we haven't produced iterations. But if the relief did not come, then we would be eighteen million dollars short of a balanced budget. And we would propose to go deeper into our reserves to offset that shortfall. That would require board action to set aside the policy of maintaining a three percent floor. It would also require us, to President, or Vice President Hampson's question earlier, to have at least an approach to repaying our stabilization fund. In this proposal, and recognizing the short and compressed timeframe we have to build a budget, what we would also then do is want to look to the out-years and say, how are we funded? How are we staffing across the district? And are there areas that we should take a harder look at? So to Director Harris's question, what would be those proposals? Rather than build those in a very compressed timeframe, without the benefit of meaningful community engagement, and without a deep understanding of the ramifications to the strategic plan and what we would be able to achieve as a district. And as well, just recognizing that we are still, I don't know if it's knee-deep, or hip-deep, or neck-deep in a pandemic, as well as the crisis of social, emotional well-being in our district. It does not seem practical or pragmatic for us to pursue those deep cuts or reductions now, without the benefit of engaging community and talking about it in a meaningful way. So what we would suggest, then, is that we take the coming year and do that type of engagement, and receive from the board the imperative to find the ways to balance our budget, either by expenditure reductions or revenue enhancements. We have not yet devised what that model would look like, how we would conduct the community engagement, but we, we believe that we would be better situated doing that over the coming twelve months, instead of over the coming six weeks. But I will pause there. We have a slide that brings us back to a longer-term outlook of the next three years. And I think if you can bear with me and come back to that portion of the discussion about how we would do the engagement, how we would think about overall budget balancing across a longer span of time, we can turn it to our colleague Ashley Davies, who can speak to the transportation efficiencies that actually could be achieved in the near term. Not without challenges and not without impact, but we think that these efficiencies are meaningful and would improve service and a lot of important things in light of our budget constraint. So I will let Ashley Davies speak to this.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Ashley Davies, Executive Director of Operations. And so I'm just going to talk a little bit about our current transportation plan and setup, and then talk about where we came up with the five million potential that could be cost savings. So currently, we operate with a two-tiered system. And that essentially means and describes the number of systems of routes that we have, running routes in the morning, and then also running a second route after that. So if we have two tiers, that would mean we've got one bus that does tier one, and then that same bus will do a tier two. Again, so one driver driving two separate routes in the morning and in the afternoon. So it does not account for a morning and afternoon that one driver would do, two in the morning, two in the afternoon. And so we're currently working on modeling a three-tiered system for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, which would provide the cost savings of five million that is allocated in that budget that you just saw, as well as improved service. So we began this school year with a shortage of drivers, and then that was even before the vaccination mandate. So if we were to move to a three-tiered system, that would mean that we would need less drivers overall. So again, not only would it improve our overall budget, but it would also help us improve service, because we would need less drivers. Currently, we have a need for about four hundred and ten drivers to drive in a two-tiered system. And that accounts for standby drivers, of which we allocate for eight to ten percent of what we may need for any given day. So just to give another example, this school year, because we started the year with a shortage of drivers, if we had a driver call out, that means we already weren't able to cover drivers, meaning we would have to provide service with extreme delays. So that four hundred and ten is that optimal number that accounts for some level of cushion, that if we had callouts, we could still cover service on time. And so with our current two-tiered system, each driver covers about one-point-six routes. That means that some drivers cover two, and some drivers will cover one. And in the three-tiered system, we would account for each driver covering about two-point-two routes. So not every driver would cover three routes. We have a combination of probably two routes and three routes. And so that would total us to a little under three hundred drivers that we would need. Next slide. So I just wanted to talk about the timeline and moving forward with this additional analysis. And Director Harris, I know you had brought up the comments around the sleep study and that work, and being able to share that. And so I unfortunately don't have information on that to share today, but that will be part of what we would be continuing to discuss as we move forward in being able to share more information around this. So currently, we are actually at the end of our five-year contract, and we did an RFP for our next five-year service. We're currently looking through recommended vendors, and will be looking to select one in the coming month. End of January twenty-twenty-two, we will complete our cost analysis and impact analysis of moving to a three-tiered system. So that will also include what the actual potential recommendation would be for what schools would move between systems, so that we could actually talk about what that impact would be on students, particularly of those at certain grades. And then in January, February, we would bring forward to the school board our new transportation contract. And then in the spring of twenty-twenty-two is when we would need final changes in any tiers to be communicated to schools and families. So I do recognize that as a quick timeline. We would have to move quickly to be able to share that analysis and information with the school boards, that we can have discussion, and also be able to share with families, so that they would understand what that impact would be.
Director Sargent?
Thank you for that presentation. I am curious, and maybe this is a question not to be answered today, but for another time. As you consider who the vendor might be, do we have, for lack of a better word, standards? Well, let me just get to the point, because I was going to try to beat around it. I think it's important that we, as a school district, have the orientation that when we are asking people to have care and concern for our kids to and from school, that we are not complicit in poverty wages and no benefits. I don't think there's a person at that table or on this dais that can honestly say we are willing to sign up for poverty wages and no benefits. And so I guess, what is our orientation around asking people who are doing the hardest work to settle for the lowest wages? It's no different in child It's no different in childcare. This is a dilemma in childcare. We're asking those people to do the hardest work for the lowest wages and no benefits. So this is something that's selfishly important to me. And I guess what are the criteria when we're looking at vendors and how they treat their employees? Do they signal that they actually value these employees? Or is the bottom line about the shareholders and the owners of the company and not the people that we're asking to safely transport our children to and from school and back home?
Yeah, okay. So I can't speak directly about the RFP specifically, just because we're currently in that process. But in terms of what you mentioned, in terms of our partner and our vendor, we work super closely with our vendors and our partners within transportation. We actually meet twice a week to talk through everything from specific long term planning as well as anything that we're noticing during the week. I would say even during each individual day, we're connecting regularly on any specific issues that come up. So we, you know, as we work with our current vendor and continue to work with other vendors, you know, it is our expectation that those who are providing service to students, regardless of where it is and whatever form it may be, is held at the highest level because everything that we do is student centered. So I would say our our approach in working with our vendors is such that we hold them to the same high standards. And if we see anything that doesn't need that, we're addressing it immediately with them.
Just to clarify, I know you're in an RFP process, and so you can't talk about the specifics. But as someone who has written RFPs and had to assemble review panels for King County Best Arts for Kids, we look at when when an applicant is applying for grant funding, what is the difference between the highest paid employee and the lowest paid employee? And our expectation is that the people that we are asking to do the hardest work are not working for poverty wages. So as as you select review members for this RFP to review these vendors, I think we have a moral obligation to actually take a look at that. And I know this has been a standing issue. I'm a thirty-four year Central District resident. My kids rode the bus. I made it a point to have a relationship with the bus driver because they're not frankly not treated very well. And actually, I wanted them to feel valued because it was important to me that my child came home alive at the end of the day and that that bus driver actually could go home and have a meal.
Director Rankin.
Thank you. And thank you, Director Sardar. Going somewhat along with that, some notes that I was writing down to ask that I don't expect you to have answers for right now, but I just wanted to ask them as we go into preparing for hearing more about the model in January is, and the with a three tier system, does this allow for scheduling for drivers to be more stable and more and closer to full time to where they reach the threshold where they do get benefits? Because I know that having the gap, like, it's a it's a tough schedule. Like, it's no wonder that we have a hard time filling those positions because you get up at five in the morning to drive one tier, then you have a gap of nothing during the day, and then, you know, you have an afternoon shift. So my questions about that were, yes, having having fewer drivers drive more routes, does that bring more opportunity for drivers to have that be a full time living wage employment with and accessing benefits? And then having gone through as a community member, the change from moving high school start times later and having one year where we had a very, very early and a very, very late elementary bell time, and then the next year going to two tiers. And each each one of those iterations had different things that were good and different things that were more challenging. So one of the things was, and maybe we're talking beyond COVID now because it's field trips, but the ability for drivers to be available for schools' needs during the day to take kids to other opportunities. And then the one thing I will be looking or interested to see about going back to three tiers, what that proposal might be, is what those times actually are. Because our all three tiers had such a large gap between tier one and tier three that within neighborhoods, it was really, really challenging on families to arrange childcare and after school activities because there were essentially two totally different schedules. And so doing like the YMCA Boys and Girls Club, anything like that, dealing with between schools, these different times was super challenging. So I just hope that we're thinking about that. And I that's it for now. I have a lot more questions about that, but I know that's not really what we're talking about right now.
Director Harris.
Thank you. I recall five years ago with the RFPs and two days of my life I'll never get back, sitting with Noltrieb and General Counsel and Stephen Nielsen and Deputy Superintendent, and figuring out ways to give bonuses to vendors that treated their people right and that gave them better benefits. And it was a great idea, and there was serious traction from senior staff. And only one vendor bid on the darn contract. And then we've seen the Teensters in here several times. We've seen a strike. And frankly, rightly so, in my opinion, in my experience. And and I have a couple of questions. One, does the STAR funding model come into this? Chief Burden? Or Assistant Superintendent Burden?
In what way?
Well.
I mean, the Stars is how the state funds us. It has in no way related to what we spend or RFP.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Is there a connection with Stars? Because you have brought up several times that it's an inequitable funding model for the largest district in the state.
No, there's not a difference. It's based on riders and how many routes. So how many to and from, which doesn't change whether it's two tier or three tier, and how many routes, destinations, sorry. I'll speak to the overall RFP process in general. Our responsibility of the district is to pick the most responsible, the lowest most responsible bidder. And those things are taken together. So it's not always just about pricing. It's also about the ability to do operations in a way that's most successful for our district. So I'm not in on the RFP team. I don't know anything about that, but I just I do know that we take more into account than just price. There's always other factors that get taken into account.
Well, and I'd like to tag on, and and this been mentioned several times before from this dais. I would love to see us come up with a combined model of drivers and additional boots on the ground help at some of our schools that need assistance or assistance in the lunchroom, assistance on the playground. And I appreciate we have more than one labor partner representing folks. But I'd like to see us blow up the model so that our bus drivers can be cross trained for assistance so that we don't have folks that are overscheduled and that they become members of that school community and treated like the extraordinary assets that they are. And if we can figure out a way at least to start conversations about that, what would it look like? Because what we're doing now isn't working so great, I don't think. And and these are same questions we had five years ago, they're the same questions we had ten years ago, they're the same questions we had fifteen years ago. And I could not agree more with Director Sardar that the people who we entrust our students' lives to ought to matter more. And and I well recall when our vendor sent in the folks from the International and we were fighting about how much money we'd get back. They they were fairly gobsmacked, if I recall a particular work session. And we finally brought them up to the table and and we had to ask General Counsel to yell stop if we were getting into litigation territory. But, you know, we keep having these conversations. I'd like to see us re-envision, for lack of a better word, how we can do better. Thank you.
Director Hampson.
Director Davies, the reduction from four hundred and twenty-eight to or four hundred and ten to two hundred and ninety-eight drivers, was that modeled based on changes in schedules just at the elementary level or at all levels?
That would be at all levels. Yeah, so the probably the most impact would be at our secondary level for a three tier schedule.
So we would be sending middle and high schoolers to school earlier?
Well, we would have to send some students probably to school a little bit earlier as well as other students to school later because we need enough time between tiers so that...
What's the earliest time that you looked at?
So I don't have that offhand because we were still just modeling off being able to move the schools to different tiers. So we don't have a definitive early time yet.
What's the savings if we only move elementary?
I don't, we don't, we haven't cost that out separately. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Director Rivera Smith.
Thank you. So Ashley, I understand you're still, you're just modeling still, so I know it's busy, but I wanted to make sure we take into account how this also will have an affect preschool.
Director Rivera Smith, can you speak?
Oh, sorry. I wanted to just remember how to think about as we model, how this is going to have a preschool and keep that in mind, especially as we want to. I know that one of the hopes is to set, to have the start times, you know, quite through their school as opposed to right now, they're a lot more different. I think we did do three or four or five schools this year where we did line them up, I think. But I think I really want to expand that. So anyways, conversation happened with them. They've gone a lot more than I do, but I just want to keep in mind the effects on preschool. So thank you.
Director Songroth.
Director Davies, I'm interested in ideas that do solve some of our operational challenges, like the one that you presented here, where we have a real bus driver shortage. And I think that's very interesting. I'm curious if the Transportation Department considered other ways to drive efficiency? And I'm kind of referring to, I think, a two thousand and nineteen study that would increase ridership on our buses by looking at planning our bus routes around people who are wanting to ride the rides versus eligible to ride our rides, because that would directly kind of improve our standing with the Stars one. I'm wondering if the Transportation Department looked at other ways to address this deficit. Thank you.
So in terms of for now, this is the this is our current proposal. There are additional, I would say, both cost efficiencies and overall service improvements that we're continuing to discuss. But in the interest of being able to bring something forward that we think is feasible for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, this is what we have currently. But there are other things that we are discussing.
Director Rankin.
Another question, thanks. Maybe at the end of last school year, I think, Director Maltese from the Transportation Department was talking about, I don't know if you recall it, a self audit, but a review of our transportation standards and where efficiencies could be made and better serviced. And that was independent of 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 a budget conversation. That was just sort of a needed improvements and things that hadn't really been looked at in a while. Is that work continuing and is it intersecting with what this is about? And hopefully, I mean, I know his focus was on equity and dependability and providing some efficiencies, which I would think would hopefully also be supportive of of changes in budget. But just I we haven't heard anything about that in a little while, so I don't know where that is in the process and how it's relating to this piece.
Yeah, so that ties into kind of the timeline piece. And so we are still working on that. But in order for us to really think about what we can plan and budget on for twenty-two, twenty-three, that isn't included at this time. We also know that that work encompasses much more engagement than we could bring forward at this time. So that work is continuing, just not something that we have anything that we can count on, anything that can be budgeted for.
So there's sort of two parallel processes, one based on service and one based on budget, and right now they're not connected?
So I would say the only reason, the only reason that is, is partly in the interest of time. But they are, they are, they are connected. And I would say if we weren't in a situation where we weren't dealing with a driver shortage, that would have been at the forefront of what we were able to tackle at the beginning of this year so that it was completely aligned. And again, just in full transparency, it's not because we've just been managing daily operations, given where we started the year with. So but as we move forward, they'll continue to be aligned.
Okay, so potentially, there could be a whole nother set of changes if that process kind of... But here's my concern, is that this is being, this is a decision being made solely on the cost. And we need to think about the the huge impact that start and end times have on the whole system. And so I just want to make sure that we're not separating those two things out, even though I do understand the concern with timing and that, you know, we don't always get what we want, what we want it. But but I don't want us to be so focused on where to find savings that we're actually leaving out this other piece that's really important. Thanks.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the discussion that we had and the things that were brought up today really reiterated the fact that when we discuss again in January and go through some of that, that'll be a core piece of our discussion.
Okay, directors, given that we are getting really close, if not have started past public testimony time, let's let's try to be pretty concise going forward. Okay, please. President Harris, I will try and wrap this up, not because all the answers are evident and clear, but just because there's more time that we'll have in the coming weeks and in the next budget work session. This slide now in front of you looks at the longer term implications of both Scenario A and Scenario B. So the figures in the twenty-two, twenty-three columns under each scenario have not changed from prior slides. You'll see at the bottom line, the nine point seven million dollars if the state were to grant some relief. And in the opposing scenario, the eighteen million dollars of shortfall if it does not. What this slide is intended to illustrate is the impact in the subsequent budget years, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five. And I'll highlight that twenty-four, twenty-five looks the same in each of the scenarios, which is to say, we are proposing to take some near term measures to bring our budget into alignment, but there is much more work that needs to be done. And that, as I was referring to earlier, will take a greater level of engagement and thoughtful planning before we can make those commitments. We do have an outline of a of plan that will continue to develop and we hope to bring forward in the January timeframe. The difficult choices that we have, whether it's on transportation or other scenarios that we want to invest in, are really just the the initiatives that are on the margin of our larger problem. So I want to forecast that we have an approach, but we are, we need to be curt about this. We are buying ourselves time by using our reserves purposefully in the coming year so that we can look at these more difficult purposefully in the coming year so that we can look at these more difficult challenges. Whether we find solutions on the revenue side by seeking additional funds from the state or a different methodology of funding, whether we look at programmatic adjustments in the way we staff our schools and administer our programs, that is the balance that we have to find. What I'd like to make quick reference to, for the benefit of the new directors especially, is Slide 13 from our last month's presentation. We don't have this to, to bring up on the, on the... Oh, you could? So the point I'd like to make here is that in our last work session, we identified the areas where the district has made choices about how to expend its resources that are different than how the state model of allocation provides us the resource to do those choices. These are the areas where we need to do broader engagement with community and stakeholders to determine, do we want to address these big areas? Those big areas are, how can we address salaries for our certificated staff in basic education? How do we do staffing in special education? Director, again, and I'm seeing board members trying to get to that page 13. Let's give it a quick beat to get there. It's on the second, it's in the second tab. Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Jones. The simple point I'd like to make is the big areas where we can look at programmatic adjustments, revenue adjustments, fall in large categories that are of critical importance to the way our district provides services to students and families. We cannot make those decisions in the next six weeks or even the next two months. It really will take a more thoughtful, prolonged engagement, balanced with the imperative to find a way to balance our overall budget. If I could make just a short statement, President Harris will take questions or close this session, depending on the director's preference. The, the short play of our summary is, we should continue to seek out additional revenue from the state and in the near term, find the political and community wherewithal to say that we need enrollment relief. We need to use the resources that we have, including the carryforward of the fund balance, the ESR dollars, and our one-time capital offsets. We need to evaluate a transportation restructure, whether that is the right choice now or later. It merits good consideration. We will look at central office reductions to an appropriate degree. Those are the steps that we can take in the very near term. We need to be mindful that we have to staff to enrollment at some point or seek better allocation of resources to match our intended level of staffing. We need to do the community engagement to find out where, I shouldn't say community exclusively, community and stakeholder engagement to look at these bigger categorical areas where we can make adjustments. And as a subcomponent of this, but a very important one, we need to engage with our labor partners and talk about how can we bring these things forward without it becoming deeply adversarial or portrayed as a budget exercise that is only about cuts and reductions, that is, is not the disposition of the district at this point. We want to do this in, in good transparent partnership. So that, if you will, is a sort of our seven-step approach to addressing in the near term and setting the stage for a longer-term discussion on our budget.
Director Hampson, I think you have a question, then we'll go to Director Harris.
Everything you just stated makes sense to me. The one piece that we haven't achieved yet is our evaluation of these circumstances and choices in the context of the student outcomes that we've committed to. I feel like we're getting closer and, but I also heard us spend an hour just now talking mostly about adults. And I, my request is that we work harder as a team to, we, we started to get close when we were talking about transportation, but when we're talking about these very difficult decisions, we're contextualizing them with the outcomes that we seek for students, which we have committed to and which we're obligated to provide good governance and decision-making to Superintendent Jones and his staff to achieve. So I don't know exactly what that looks like. As I said, I believe that we're, we can get there. And I believe we also need to start to move the participatory budgeting conversations as well, not because we have to change the topic, but how we, how we talk about it. So that, that's my request for the next time that we get together, is how we start to link these to actual outcomes for students. We do have data around secondary students and the impact of change in, in delts on them and on their, their grades. And we want to make sure that we're making the right decisions and that, that one light item about, I wanted to note that those additional projects doesn't actually speak to the fact that those are critical investments that we have to make in things like interim assessments so that we can actually determine, so you all can determine whether or not we're on the pathway to those outcomes each year. So they're not throwaway projects. They're absolutely critical investments, and there's a lot of trade-offs that we have to make. We need to make sure that we're making the right trade-offs. I don't think we've done that in the past, and this is our opportunity to do that. That's all. Thank you.
Director Harris.
Thank you. With respect to last month's Slide number 13 and this month's Slide number 14, if we could add an extra column to the right that says state-funded and then present both of those next month, I think it presents a clearer picture because, you know, seven nurses, the 13% cap on, on special education funding, et cetera. It's presented in two different ways, but, but if we could keep that paramount, I, I, I think then it becomes a persuasive tool. Thank you.
President Harris, if there are no other questions, could I take just a moment to respond to Vice President Hampson's comments?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. My apologies for the confusion there. Vice President Hampson, I would just want to acknowledge that our presentation today has been largely devoid of the student outcomes, and that is to a degree an oversight on our part, and we will rectify that in our coming presentations. But what I would like to give, give voice to is the superintendent's direction last week and this week to say just that, that we must bring forward a budget that clearly identifies our priorities and student outcome-focused efforts, whether it's the governance model or the actual operational delivery of services in the district. Our fine colleagues, Dr. Pedrosa, Dr. Williams, Dr. Scarlett, are already engaged in a very careful crosswalk of how we map the strategic plan to the student outcome-focused goals and bring that into our senior staff discussions about where are we allocating our resources and identifying our clearest priorities that benefit students and communities. And at the same time, we are trying to keep in front of us a very clear focus on equity and the attainment of those goals so that we don't unintentionally disadvantage communities. And that is the very, the very, in, the difficult set of conversations we're having as a, as a leadership team now. Difficult not because we're misaligned in how we should orient ourselves. The difficulty is, how do we set aside our embedded scarcity model and look at budgeting in a way that is truly focused on the outcomes that are most beneficial to students and consistent with the commitments that the superintendent has made to the board and to the public. So Dr. Jones has made that very clear to all of us, and that will be manifest and clear in our upcoming presentation.
I literally couldn't have said it better myself, but I just want to add a plus one to what Deputy Gannon mentioned. It may not be abundantly clear in this document, but it is abundantly clear in our senior cabinet conversations and how we're doing our analysis. So just wanted to affirm that.
Director Rivera Smith, and this will be the last question.
Thank you. I just wanted to, when you keep talking about staffing to enrollment, I'm wondering how that's going to affect class size, because I'm thinking of student outcomes. I think, and we're, we pretty much are, can agree that class size has a great impact on student outcomes. So did that, have, have that affected and how, and what do we do to mitigate that?
So, so class size would be according to both the collective bargaining agreement and to generate the maximum K3 revenue. So in grades K1, 2, 3, it's 17 to 1. In our high needs equity schools, it can be 15 to 1. And then the class sizes for 4 and 5 would not, would not be changing from what, from what they were this year. I mean, the class sizes, class sizes would likely feel bigger if there are less teachers, because right now we're, we're overstaffed by the numbers that we showed in the slide.
Yeah. And I hear, how would you say about it? It's in, it's in this, what, BBA, but I know we did change it last year. We, we up, we up, we raised...
We did by one.
Yeah. So I know it can change. That's why I'm asking, because I'm afraid it would go up again and, and we...
There's no more increases that are planned. And I think that that's part of what we focus on when we talk about student-focused outcomes, is whether or not class size, where does that rank in getting outcomes for students? So that is front and center with RCA and I call it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, directors, and thank you to staff for that robust conversation. As always, it is greatly appreciated. We are going to skip past the consent agenda portion and go directly to public testimony. We have now reached the public testimony portion of the agenda. We will begin taking public testimony in person and by teleconference today, as stated on the agenda. For any speakers watching through SPS TV, please call in now to ensure that you are on the phone line when your name is called. Over procedure 1430 BP provides the rules for testimony, and I ask that speakers are respectful of these rules. I will summarize some important parts of this procedure. First, testimony will be taken today from those individuals called from our public testimony list and, if applicable, the waiting list, which are included on today's agenda posting on the school board website. Only those who are called by names should unmute their phones or step forward to the podium, and only one person should speak at a time. Speakers from the list may cede their time to another person when the listed speaker's name is called. The total amount of time allowed will not exceed two minutes for the combined number of speakers and will not be restarted after the new speaker begins. In order to maximize opportunities for others to address the board, each speaker is allowed only one speaking slot per meeting. If a speaker cedes their time to a later speaker on the testimony list or waiting list, the person whom time was ceded will not be called to provide testimony again later in the meeting. As there is only one speaking slot per person, those who do not wish to have the time ceded to them may decline and retain their place on the testimony or waitlist. Finally, the majority of the speaker's time should be spent on the topic they have indicated they wish to speak about. Ms. Wilson Jones, please read off the testimony speakers.
Thank you, President Harris. For those who are joining us for testimony today, when I call your name, if you're in the room, you can step to the podium. And if you are on the phone, when I call your name, please press star six to unmute on the conference call line. And for anyone who is on today's testimony list and who has not yet made it into the room, because we're short on space, we'll make sure to call your name again if you're not in the room yet when I call it. First on today's testimony list is Samuel Casa. Samuel Casa.
Today, we're here to talk about equity around prom. As it currently is, we don't have much information about prom or even if we can have one, and there has been big talk around all, every, around every South End Seattle public school. Since prom is such a big event, there will be major backlash if we don't have a prom, and students who were already talking about prom this whole year will lose motivation if there is not prom, because prom is such like a big event to everyone.
So many students like really use their prom or prom and other like school events to keep their like motivation and grades up. And like going to prom or like having a prom will like drive the attendance goals for us like even more because we can always like change prom to like have a, an attendance like goal. If you did not meet this, you can't go to prom, like, sorry. And that's not like the last bit of it. So the big thing that we really want to talk about is how North End schools will always have a prom and their PTSA will pay for it.
Yeah. And even if, I mean, their PTSA will pay for it no matter what, because they have that money and they will be able to sign the liability insurance, and that is a big equity gap, because a lot of the Seattle, a lot of the South End Seattle public schools, their PTSA or Alumni Association will not be able to sign that because they just don't have the funding. And our parents' money really shouldn't determine if we have a prom, especially if we sent the, spent the last four years working hard, doing all these events for our own prom, just to have it not be able to happen.
And so with COVID this year, I know that there are a lot of regulations about like big events, and we could always have like, as we do in like the basketball games, proof of vaccination or proof of negative COVID test within the past 24 hours. We can always take these like safety regulations and bring that to the school events.
And what's, I, also about the equity part, there is, like, even if we can't raise the money, I feel like there should still be a district of, a district venue for every single Seattle public school to use that, so that schools that don't have that money, and especially because of COVID, we haven't been able to raise as much money for these past two years, there should be just a venue that every Seattle public school should use or can use if they don't raise that amount money, so no students really have to stress and worry about having a prom. Thank you.
Disappointing privilege, as, as an alumni, I think of the school that you are representing. I didn't hear what high school that you're, you're from.
It's on my mast, Franklin High School.
That, that's right. I attended a Franklin prom a few years back, and, and I remember how, how glorious it was. And at the end of the prom, we left the prom, took our tuxedos off and put on shorts and got in trouble. So it, it was, it was a fantastic event, and we're going to try and make it happen for you.
Thank you.
No pictures. No pictures. Yeah. So from one Quaker to another, we're going to make it happen for you.
All right. Thank you very much.
The next speaker on today's testimony list is Sebastian, maybe help me with the pronunciation, Pelé Axe.
School Board Directors, Superintendent Jones, thank you for allowing us to be here today and for creating a space to have our voices heard. We've really been enjoying in-person school, getting to reconnect with our friends, and taking part in the extracurricular activities only possible during in-person school.
We are the class officers of 2022 at Lincoln High School, representing the first graduating class of seniors since 1981. We've had the great privilege of getting to create many of the traditions at Lincoln, and we hope you'll give us the privilege of getting us to host Lincoln's first prom since reopening.
As students, really, we really want to have a safe prom. This means...
This means requiring masks and vaccines, as well as providing robust testing for students beforehand and at the door. We know these strategies work to substantially reduce transmission and we know they work best with careful planning. Right now, with the district moratorium on signing of events contract, of event contracts, we simply cannot plan the specifics of our safety plan because we can't book a venue. Once we sign the first contract, we can immediately start creating methods to check vaccination status and arrange for COVID testing at our event.
As you all almost certainly know, this has really, really been a tough past eighteen months. And we ask that you please consider allowing us to provide a prom for our classmates. Uh, a safe prom, it really starts with just the ability to plan that prom. And we hope you'll give us the opportunity to plan a safe, fun and successful event to conclude our senior year. Thank you so much.
Then the next speaker on today's testimony list is Jocelyn, um, Punganabon.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Jocelyn Punganiban and I am a sen, I'm a senior at Chief Self International High School. As you know, prom is an important milestone to many students. It gives us an opportunity to celebrate the end of our high school careers with our peers. At Chief Self, while we have a caring and supportive community of people, we simply do not have the financial resources to hold a prom independently compared to many other schools that are far more privileged. This is inequitable towards our community, along with many other schools that share a similar position as we do. The only place that Chiefs, that Chief Self can afford to hold a prom is on school grounds, which we can only do with school board approval. Our class of twenty twenty-two A S B has spent the past four years trying to fundraise as much money as we can for monumental moments such as prom, and it would be unfortunate to see that hard work not get celebrated. Our community at Chief Self are willing to overcome any obstacles it may take to achieve the memorable and safe prom that our seniors deserve. We urge you to take our story and circumstances under consideration when implementing a decision that will impact how many students of class of twenty twenty-two will remember their senior year. Thank you.
The next speaker is Dylan Carney Woods. Dylan Carney Woods.
Hello. Oh, okay. Hello, I'm Dylan, a student at Ballard High School. As member of Students Against Sexual Assault, I want to thank you all for the support you've shown towards this movement. Today I'm here to address Ms. Song Wuritz. Uh, at the last board meeting, you stated, and I quote, "I need to examine the data, particularly desegregated data. I need to hear from the community." Well, I'm here today because the community has spoken. This testimony is for you. I conducted a survey that was taken by six hundred and sixty-five S P S students. Over sixty-three percent of these students are female. Seventy-seven point four percent of these people have been sexually harassed or assaulted, yet only twenty-two percent of them have reported this to their school. I had them rate their reporting experience on a scale from one to ten, one being horrible and ten being amazing. Eighty-nine percent rated the school's response below a five on this scale. This statistic does not surprise me. How do you expect students to come forward about their experience if eighty-nine percent of them usually are further traumatized by the reporting process? Only you guys can fix this. Separate from student victims, seventy-seven percent of us do not feel safe or protected from sexual assault at school. Only forty-nine percent of us have an adult we feel safe talking to about our experiences in our school. If you're not convinced our demands are valid, I can help with that too. Ninety point nine percent of students said they would benefit from a sexual assault specialized therapist in their school. Eighty-four point one percent would benefit from monthly training for mandatory reporters. Ninety-four point six percent would benefit from a revised flash curriculum and seventy-three percent would benefit from the Title IX revisions. We're going to provide you all with printed copies of this survey, and we highly recommend that you take some time to examine it. No matter what challenges you hand us, we will get through it. Any uncertainty you have will fix it, and any questions you have, we will answer them. As you all requested, the community has spoken and we will not stop until we get justice. Thank you.
Next for testimony is Chris Jackins.
My name is Chris Jackins, box eight four zero six three, Seattle nine eight one two four. On today's board work session on the budget, two points. Number one, please use the full qualifying amount of twenty-one point one million dollars of capital funds for operations. The district had done this the last several years. The general fund budget could be in better shape now. Number two, returning to three tour transportation would mean three different school start times. Please add transportation to out of attendance area schools so that families can choose schools with start times that fit their schedules. On the three action items, four points. Number one, three items are being introduced for a vote at the same meeting, which limits review. Number two, the report on the teacher diversity contract provides no data on the previous two years. Number three, the calendar item would make January twenty-seventh a makeup day for the canceled school day on November twelfth. Board has never responded to the fact that nine days prior to November twelfth, the district knew of a giant lack of substitutes. Number four, please permanently drop service learning as a mandatory requirement. Require students to work for free as similar to indentured servitude. On final acceptance of the Bagley project, I have questions about change orders and about place space turned into church parking. On the Lincoln project, the guaranteed maximum price is increasing one point one million dollars, but the overall project budget is increasing seven point three million dollars. Why? On the approval of courses, perhaps if the district had had access to Philippine X American U S history, the board would have prevented the demolition of the Decatur Annex at Thornton Creek. Thank you very much.
Next for public testimony is Emma Medicine Whitecrow. Emma Medicine Whitecrow.
Good evening, Superintendent Jones, Board of Directors, Marara Way, O C O. I'm Emma Medicine Whitecrow, Comanche, Cherokee. I'm the president of Native Education Indian Parent Committee, Indian Parent Advisory Committee. And I'm speaking about adopting new curricula, but not requiring accountability or training in classrooms for already adopted curricula. Indian Parent Advisory Committee asked me again, for the third time, to come before you to make these three asks. I've already emailed these three asks in a letter, so you should have them in your inbox. We know that this board is reactionary to grandstanding loud voices. These asks, excuse me. We, however, as an Indian Parent Committee, wish to be your partner. The I P A C is a required part of our Native Ed federal grant. We ask and our task is to provide Seattle Public Schools the opportunity to fulfill the federal trust responsibility. We are again affirming that as your partner, we want the best educational experience and opportunities for our children. And we will help them to be successful in their life journey. Required one, our first act is required that all teachers not only take the S T I training provided by S B S Native Ed, to make it a requirement on the annual evaluation for principals. It's a law. Reinstate the Native Education and Leadership Position from manager to director. And number three, stop tokenizing Native Americans one time per year, Native American Heritage Month. We are native all year and we appreciate the day for prefer a place at the table. The I P A C insists that school leaders and should require their teaching staff attend S T I training and implement S T I curricula in the classroom. We also are asking that Native students are still being, that we stop harming Native students. Native students are still being exposed to racist, dangerous and harmful teachings. The current manager, Gail Morris, of the Title VI Indian Education Program, it helps to positively impact the community relationship. We need strong leadership position at S P S. Gail Morris, the current program manager, is a native educator who has proven to be a strong leader and exceptional trainer, S T I, and a trusted, dedicated, valued member of our native community. We honor Native American Heritage Month, yet we continue to hear from parents who have come before us who have their children come home for Thanksgiving break wearing pilgrim hats and construction paper feathers. By taking the above actions, Seattle Public Schools will better respect their relationship with the people on whose land they currently reside in, and we will not lose valued staff to other districts because you continue to value them. Thank you.
The next speaker is Dr. Pio De Cano. Dr. Pio De Cano.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak before the board. I want to show you this because this sign here is, uh, student outcomes. That's what we're looking for. We want to make sure that the kids that go to school who with the new Filipino-American curriculum will be, will not be part of this, will, will be able to avoid this. I spent my life, I retired from Nathan Hale High School as a school counselor in, uh, nineteen ninety-seven. And so I'm, uh, and I worked in curriculum as a administrator running federal programs. And what you're doing with respect to, uh, uh, the secondary, uh, school curriculum with, uh, we're focusing on the Filipino-American experience is really important. My, uh, my father, uh, uh, had a Washington State Supreme Court decision uh, uh, that let Filipino-Americans own property in the state of Washington. And this is the eightieth anniversary year of that Washington State Supreme Court decision. He fought it on his own, and this is a kind of, uh, of, uh, sign that Filipino, Filipinos recently arrived from Stockton, or this was taken in Stockton, but it was happening all over the United States, especially in California and here in Washington, given the nature of my dad's, uh, victory in the Supreme Court. So again, I worked in education for twenty-five years and I've been retired for twenty-seven. But the, the steps you're taking today will, are appropriate for this anniversary year of my dad.
Next is Cynthia Mejia Giudici.
Good evening, Superintendent Jones and the board members. My name is Cynthia Mejia Giudici, a proud daughter of first generation immigrants from the Philippines. And I'm a published author, oral historian, and Philippine X community advocate. I'm also a former Seattle Public School teacher, sign language interpreter and consulting teacher. I was also the Filipino Club Advisor at Roosevelt High School. I'm here in support of the Philippine X American History, but also for the Women of Color Comparative Literature Arabic Class and Black World Studies proposals in which you will be voting for. I learned my roots from my mother and father. I'm very proud of it. And I also did, uh, research on a book called America, Filipinos in America, nineteen ninety-eight to nineteen seventy-four. But this is me. These were not my students. These were not the students that came to the Filipino Club. They just wanted to eat lumpia in Punset. And I asked them, what do you know about your backgrounds? And they said, I don't know. I just know lumpia is really cool and you're going to offer it again next time. And it really saddened me. Seattle is a hotbed. It is a place where students can visit. Places that like, uh, history in Alaska, Canaries, the labor movement, agricultural, Chinatown I D, the churches, Filipino clubs. And this is something that they are not aware of. And yes, they know about Doug Baldwin, Cheryl Burke, Manny Pacquiao, Leah Solanga, but nothing of their history. It saddened me that their knowledge was so limited, but was also the duty of their parents to give them that. But what if the parents themselves don't know about their own Filipino-American history in the United States? My timeline events in my book ended in nineteen seventy-four. Think of the events that have occurred since then, a new wave of Filipinos. And not only that, let us not forget the greater community of our mixed race, our African-American, Latino, Indian, Caucasian blood mixed with the blood of Filipinos. This is the new Filipino community. Please, as a fellow educator, I strongly support the proposals for your vote today. We, this group of supporters, ask you, the Seattle School Board, to vote yes. Thank you very much.
Next is Dev, Devin Cabanea on behalf of Dolores Sabanga.
Good evening. Uh, by day you know me as Devin, but tonight I speak as Dolores. The Honorable Dolores Sabanga is the first Filipino-American lawyer in Washington State. Dolores is also the first woman of color ever elected to the Seattle City Council. She also ran for mayor in the late nineteen eighties, and she is safely at home at ninety years old. Dear School Board members, this is to urge each of you to vote for new course content, particularly Filipino X American History for Middle School and High School. I am Dolores Sabanga, a former Seattle elected official and retired attorney. I graduated from Bailey Gatzert Grade School, Washington Junior High and Garfield High School. I have a Bachelor of Arts and Juris Doctor degrees from the University of Washington. And not once in all my years of formal education was I taught about Filipino-American history. Now my adult grandchildren are eager to learn about their heritage, but like me, their source of knowledge comes not from Seattle schools, but from organizations like the Filipino-American National History Society. Filipinos have been in North America for four hundred years, in the Seattle area for one hundred forty years. We number one hundred seventy-eight thousand three hundred in Washington State as of two thousand eighteen. There are more than five thousand Filipino children in Seattle schools. If we are forgotten, a rich and vital part of our children's education is missing. Please vote for new course content and the inclusion of Philippine X American History. Thank you, Dolores Sabanga Esquire.
Next is Janel Lard, Lard Isabel. Janel Lard Isabel.
Dr. Jones, Senior Staff Directors, Garfield High School is reeling. In the past month, we've had two bomb threats that evacuated the building. A shootout on campus just one after, one hour after school let out, while many of our student athletes were still present. And last week, a lockdown when unknown individuals entered the building seeking to harm a student. We understand we're not alone and that there have been threats and incidents at other Seattle schools. These are large urban high schools with open campuses, and we simply don't have the resources we need to meet this surge in violence. We're here tonight to urge you to reallocate funds to immediately support the following critical needs at Garfield High School. First, integrated student supports. Garfield has over sixteen hundred students and only four counselors. We ask for additional counselors and a social worker trained to work with youth who can conduct needs assessments, implement prevention programs and coordinate a range of community supports for our students, including mental health services. Second, security specialists. Garfield is a nine-acre campus with two buildings, three parking lots, a track, playfields, and only two security guards. We ask for a third security specialist to monitor doors, patrol the premises and respond to incidents. Most importantly, any steps to improve safety and security at Garfield must engage the students who go there, as well as their families. We need to empower our teens to be part of the solution. Dr. Jones, Senior Staff Directors, we invite you to join us tomorrow night for a community meeting at Epiphany Parish at six P M. And as you work on next year's very challenging budget, we urge you to find the money and to make our students' safety your priority. We don't want to become a national statistic. We don't want to look back and say, all the signs were there, but we didn't act with enough urgency to protect our kids. Please act with urgency. Thank you.
Next is Kristy Devater. Kristy Devater.
Good evening. Kids do well if they can. That's the guiding principle of Dr. Ross Green, clinical psychologist, New York Times bestselling author and founding director of Lies in the Balance, a group that provides resources and trainings on collaborative and proactive solutions, an evidence-based model that helps schools and families work with kids to identify and solve problems that cause challenging behaviors. I'm a mom to three Seattle Public School students and co-chair of the Restraint and Isolation Committee for the Seattle Isolation Committee for the Seattle Special Education PTSA. None of my kids have been restrained at school. They've never been isolated, or suspended, or expelled, but they do struggle to do well at times, especially my oldest, who has an IEP for a disability that's mostly invisible, and who does often get labeled lazy, unmotivated, or checked out when he struggles. I took this board position to amplify the voices of parents who are begging our educators to understand that behavior is communication, full stop. Kids do well if they can, and teachers do well if they can, when we provide them with the right training and tools to understand, support, collaborate with, and sustain our students' learning, behavioral challenges and all. Our students, teachers, and families deserve this support, and I want to find ways to provide it, which led me to reach out to Dr. Green, who's worked with so, who's helped so many families, including mine. Dr. Green offered to bring his trainings to Seattle Public Schools at no cost to the district. He's doing similar work with the Department of Education in Maine and in Fairfax, Virginia, to help bring their schools into compliance with restraint and seclusion bills they've recently passed. Trainings are both district-wide and web-based, as well as intensive and in-person for schools most in need. I conveyed this offer to doctor, to district leadership and the school board on December 6th, and offered to arrange a meeting with Dr. Green to discuss it. I received an email last night from Dr. Torres, letting me know his team is reviewing and vetting the resources and info provided. I so appreciate Dr. Torres taking this request seriously, as I'm only a parent, but one who has experienced the value of this work firsthand. I welcome school board directors to connect with Dr. Green as well, and we'll leave a copy of, of my letter and his books here for you to review. Thank you so much for your consideration.
The next speaker is Sabrina Burr.
We're about the business of students. We can't be about conflict, end quote. Thank you, Director Sargiu. Director Harris, trying to defend a nomination, you are willing to assassinate someone's character for a situation that you do not have all the information, and you stated untrue information. You stated there was an appeal, and that is true, but when you stated there was a lawsuit, that's not true. You should be glad, as a school board director, that Vice President Hampson is willing to stand up for what is right. But when you said there's a lawsuit, as you should know, and you know from your law background, you should understand the impact that this wrong decision can make on the other 294 districts in our state. And I understand this from other school board members, from other districts and education government agencies. You, are you so tired and scorned that you are willing to assassinate someone's character for a vote for someone who does not have the history, skill, or ability from a public-facing viewpoint? My daughter watched this with me, and she said, this is even worse than her ghetto school comment, and I am so glad that there are not youth on the school board yet. Her other observations made me proud of her insight and awareness, but extremely sad of what she observed, unacceptable and shameful. This policy was a board policy that should have been in the hands, that should not have been in the hands of staff. That was the problem. Community work, stories of pain and trauma that our students experience were woven into this bar and the work. It was replaced with something unrecognizable. This is the work, if this is the work, this is the work that had two accountability documents, one for building leaders and one for students. I talked about it on King Five Move. Something student-focused, centered in community, got hijacked and became about adults. And if Director Hampson and Dr. Wolf had experienced anything like I did, you should be defending them. They are guilty only of asking them to do their job, a job that should have been done by the board, but Juno wanted to win on the first anti-racist policy, forget the students. And at no time did anyone on this board acknowledge or defend the native culture and heritage. If anything, from everything that I read, you would think that a white man and a white woman against two black women. This is the ancestral land of direct, of former Director DeWolf. The investigation is a snapshot of years of work that was started with Director Hampson as a Seattle Council PTSA president, Director Sly, Dr. Jones, and Dr. Petrosa, work that made her join this board. And families of sexual assault, district harm do not have the tools to hold the district accountable, because student-focused work became about people and positions. We must do better and be better role models and not make decisions on emotions and feelings. Feelings change, facts don't. Vice President Hampson, thank you for being unapologetic about getting it right for students. This is life and death work, and we all must do better.
The next speaker is Kayla Efting. Kayla Efting, if you're on the phone, you can go ahead.
Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Awesome. Good evening, School Board Directors, Superintendent Jones, and Community. My name is Kayla F. King. I am a parent at Garfield High School, as well as a PTSA president. In recent weeks, our school community has experienced a significant increase in on and near-campus violence. I am here to ask for two things to help ensure student and staff's safety. One, we need the robust mental health support the district named in its back-to-school plan for the 21-22 school year. A three-month wait for services simply isn't cutting it. We have to have the tools to address behavioral issues, mental health support, and trauma support for staff and students facing school-based violence. If our students and staff are to be healthy and thriving, this is something that can no longer wait. Two, we also need an additional security specialist at our building. With the size of our building and number of students, two security specialists simply isn't enough. An additional security person is essential for the safety of our staff and students. In closing, I would also like to call out that this increased violence is not unique to Garfield, but has been seen district-wide. And without the additional supports specifically concerning mental health and security across the board, we will continue, continue to see these issues rise. I believe we are at a pivotal point, and we cannot wait to act until something tragic happens. We have to be bold, creative, and intentional, because there will never be enough money. Our kids and staff are depending on us to get this right. I hope that you will keep these things at the front of your mind during your ongoing budget conversations. Thank you in advance for your partnership and swift actions in addressing our current and urgent safety issues.
The next speaker is Velma Valoria. Velma Valoria. Velma, if you're on the phone, please press star six to unmute. Velma Valoria. Moving to the next speaker, Josh Solorio. Josh Solorio.
Hi, Superintendent Jones, members of the school board. First, I just want to start by thanking you guys for giving me the opportunity to speak here today. I also want to personally thank Board Member Hershey and Hampson for coming out and addressing me and my members personally outside. So I'm a union representative for the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 302. We represent over 750, 750 members in the Seattle School District that work in custodial, culinary, security, and alarm. So the reason that we're here today, currently, we are in negotiations to address some of the below-market wages that many of our members are being paid right now. We have a lot of members that are being paid a lot less than the surrounding school districts in their respective positions, and we just want to highlight that fact to you and hopefully get your guys' support in these negotiations with the school district. We think that these negotiations are moving in a positive direction, but we just wanted to highlight the fact that these negotiations are ongoing and that a lot of our members, they're forced to go to the food bank every week, because they cannot sustain on the wages that they're being paid right now. We have members that work in this district that cannot even afford to live here, and that is just unacceptable in a district like Seattle. So I really appreciate you guys giving us the opportunity to speak. We have plenty of members outside that came out here in the rain and the wind. To just let it be known that we hope we have your guys' support. Like I said, we really think these negotiations are moving in a positive direction, but we would love your guys' support in this fight. So thank you guys so much. I appreciate you guys giving me the time to speak here today. All right, have a good rest of your night, guys. Thank you so much.
Checking back one more time to see if Velma Valoria is on the line. Velma, if you're on the line, please press star six now to unmute. President Hershey, that concludes today's testimony list.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Mr. Wilson Jones, and a huge thank you to everybody who shared their time and perspective with us, but none more so than our students, especially our students from Ballard. Your continued courage, coming out here and addressing us on a regular basis, is very seen and much appreciated, so thank you for that. Okay, so we're going to get back on track with our agenda. We need to move back to the consent portion. I'm going to find the page on which the consent portion is. Okay, we're good to go. We have now reached the consent portion of today's agenda. May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Approval of the consent agenda has been moved by Vice President Hampson and seconded by Director Rivera Smith. Do directors have any items that they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will now move to a vote on the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And aye. Okay, fantastic. Thank you for that very quick movement. Okay, we have now come, actually, would y'all mind if we say board committee reports and lump them with comments at the end? Does it, does it make a difference to anyone? Okay, let's move right into our agenda so that we can get staff out of here if they, if they need to go. So. Say again, I'm sorry. Board committee reports? Yeah, so if we can move those to the end. Okay, fantastic. Cool. Okay, give me one moment. Page is sticking together. All right, we will now move to the action items on today's agenda. The first item that we have, actually not, oh, here we go. Okay. So the first item that we have is approval of the renewal teacher diversity contract between the City of Seattle Department of Education and Early Learning Deal and the city, or excuse me, the Seattle Public Schools' SPS to diversify the educator workforce. May I have a motion for this item?
I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to execute the renewal of the teacher diversity contract with the City of Seattle Department of Education and Early Learning, and accept the funds in the amount of $3,865,701 over five years for the purposes of advancing diversity among the educator workforce and to take all actions necessary to implement the contract. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second.
This item has been moved and properly seconded. Do we have a report from staff on this one? Oh, on the phone. Fantastic. Take it away.
Good evening. It's Mike Simmons. Apologies for not being there in person. Can you hear me?
We are working on it. We can hear you, but you're soft. Give us two seconds. Continue, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Again, Superintendent Jones and school board, thanks for allowing me the time to share a little bit more on the City of Seattle Deal Contract Renewal. Again, Mike Simmons, Director of Talent Management, reporting Noel Treat, who's the executive director of HR. We certainly recognize with this contract that we must be mindful of the ongoing alignment with the district's goals and guardrails as we continue this work. As indicated in the previous statements there, we're looking for introduction and action due to the complexity of the city's contracting process, because the funds are obviously needed immediately. We're moving from the year-to-year contract to the five-year multi-year agreement as stated in the motion there. The first two years of the contract, 2019, 20, and 2021, we certainly met the performance goals and received the performance targets there and received that performance payment to, at the 100% level. The report out for this contract to the city is three times a year. The first time for this year, 21-22, will be this week. The contract really represents the partnership with the city's Department of Early Learning. Primary areas that we really focus on are tuition assistance, as we want, we don't want that to be a barrier, if you will, to any of our participants in the contract and, at our local schools. The other piece is mentorship and professional development. The programs specifically targeted with this contract partnership is the AA programs at Seattle Colleges Central and North Seattle, BA programs at City U, Central Washington, and University of Washington, including the C-High program, which is special education high incidence programs. And then, of course, we have our bilingual and ELL endorsements of our current teachers. And then we have a partnership, the Seattle Teaching Residency through the Alliance. We also have a non-monetary coordination and collaboration with University of Washington's My Brothers Teacher Program, and it also funds our AREE Program Manager position, which is currently occupied by K. O. Wilson. Seventy-two percent of this contract goes to tuition assistance. We apply the last-dollar-eight approach, which means that every participant must fill out the FAFSA form and whatever, and then the specific score, respective schools will address that, whatever's left with scholarships, and that's where we come in. So that's what the last-dollar-eight piece is. Currently, participating in our programs, we have about 250, and 72 of those have binding contracts that are slated to be in SPS classrooms in the fall of 2022. From a demographic standpoint, students of color make up 72%, or 180 of the 250. Ninety-two are males, 152 are females, and six are non-binary. Of those 150, of those 250, I'm sorry, 148 are SPS graduates, or 59%. So those are graduates who desire to come back to the district where they graduated from and participate as teachers of record. So therein lies the overview, if you will, of the City of Seattle Deal Contract Renewal, and I can take any questions.
All right. Have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and move to the vote on this. Okay, Ms. Wilson Jones, roll call, please.
Sorry, Director Rivera Smith? Director Sargiu?
Aye.
Director Song Marie?
Aye.
Vice President Hampson?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
President Hershey?
Proudly aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
I'll just say thank you very much.
Thank you for your continued service. We really appreciate you, Mike.
Absolutely.
Okay, let's move on to action item number two, approval of an update to the 2021-22 school year calendar. May I have a motion for this item?
I move that the school board approve the updated 2021 to 22 school year calendar as attached to the board action report with any minor non-substantive additions, deletions, or modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second.
Item has been moved and properly seconded. We will now move to some comments from staff. I believe we are hearing from Mr. Boy.
Just to discuss the change to the school calendar. As you know, the school board's, one of your many responsibilities is to set the school calendar each year, and that is detailed in Washington law. And this change is a result of the day off that we had to take as an emergency measure when we didn't have enough staff to cover with substitutes the day after Veterans Day, which was November 12th. Originally, we had indicated that we would likely add this to the end of the school year. Originally, we had indicated that we would likely add this to the end of the school year, but upon further kind of thought, we determined that that probably wasn't the best solution as it would result in a one-day school week tacked on to the end of the school year. And that one day would have fallen on a Tuesday because it's a holiday weekend. We received suggestions from staff and received feedback from our labor partners that January 27th is likely the better choice as it's currently a day off between semesters. And that would then allow us to have a complete full year, a complete school year, meeting our 180-day requirement and not have that awkward one day at the end tacked on to the end. So if you have any questions, I'd welcome them.
Directors have any questions on this? Okay, I see Director Rankin, and then we'll go to Director Rivera Smith.
Thank you. Well, so it's, it's, has been, or it's calendared as a day between semesters. And my remembrance is that that's also sometimes used as a potential snow day, makeup day. So that's, it's not, it's not totally unusual that this would become a makeup day for something, although snow tends to happen after, after that day passes, which I've always thought was kind of funny. But my question is, does that day become the last day of first semester or the first day of second semester?
So when I looked at the calendar, originally, the last day of first semester was considered January 26. It's my opinion that because we lost one day within that first semester, that then that now means that January 27th is now the last day of first semester, keeping our semesters.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Yes, and then that does kind of beg the question is if we had added it on to the end of the year, but.
So without the missing, or the kind of pause day, teachers will have and students will have their first semester classes that day, and then the next day would be second semester class schedule, new schedule, all that.
Yep, they would start second semester on that Friday.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ronald. And I asked at this point, I asked, what would the plan, should this happen again? Was there, was there, have you guys talked about what, how to prevent this from happening again? Because it will happen in four years, and 2025 will have a Tuesday Veterans Day, so another potential for a four-day weekend there. And you explained some of the talks in bargaining that are going to be done. But I guess maybe what I should have said too, and you can give, you can give that again here. But I think a greater question is, how are we addressing that, that our staff had the need, there's such a great need to take that day off? How are we addressing that burnout of our staff and that need for just respite that, you know, they get, they're going to get right now, get the last scheduled, but, but there's clearly a great need going on. And the answer, I don't know, I think is giving them more days off. It's also just, how do we help them through the year, help them support them so they don't get to the point that they need so many extra days off? It's, I know it's a huge question, but I guess that's probably what I should have more said at that meeting, but, because I appreciate your answer regarding the operational changes and things like that, which you can share again if you want. But like I said, the other question is, how are we, how are we helping so, staff aren't so desperate for extra days off that they're having to come in such great numbers for things like this?
Yeah, I think that that's an excellent question, and I know that in the next bargain as well, we've been contemplating and brainstorming ways that we can potentially take things off a teacher's plate. Of course, I think, I've even seen memes about this where you're like, like it just, that doesn't happen. It's always about adding to a teacher's plate. But I believe that that is, that is something that we're discussing. What can we look at as far as doing that? And I think that there is also really making sure that our, our staff is aware of the resources that are available to them through our Human Resources Department to work on mental health and things like that, things of that nature, and that support that we can provide. But I think it's a very difficult question. I think it's very difficult to, to find an answer to. But it is something that we have been discussing, and hopefully we'll be able to, working with our labor partner, SCA, come up with some good solutions.
Thank you.
Director Rankin?
Ari, I, yeah. Um, thinking forward to future calendars, this is an item that is under the purview of the school board. And typically, it kind of comes to the school board at the end of discussion for, with the assumption that we will say, looks good. What process can we engage in that doesn't interfere with the bargaining process about looking ahead to the calendar dates and, and, you know, engaging more around, and sooner, what potential days might pop up that would make sense to adjust? Or what families are interested in? I've just, it's, it's become a conversation that's tied only to bargaining, and it's actually, should be more of a community conversation.
I agree. I know that, you know, with this date in particular, I know that James Bush was in communication with the Seattle Council, PTSA. And I think that that may be, just as I think about it, just at the dais here, just maybe an avenue in which we do engage further. You know, this route, you know, we really did just, you know, kind of, we informed of kind of what we were thinking and kind of, you know, invited feedback, but I think that there is room to potentially do greater engagement there. And I, just kind of at the top of my head, I think that's likely one of our best options. But I'd say for now.
You, Director Rankin, and thank you, Mr. Boy. Okay, so we will now move, if there are no other questions, to a vote on this item. Ms. Wilson Jones, will you please call the roll?
Director Sargu?
I, I think I'm voting aye. Is that the right vote? Yeah, okay. Yeah, it sounds like, that, that's what you would prefer. Is that correct? Okay, aye.
Director Song Moritz?
Aye.
Vice President Hampson?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
President Hershey?
Aye.
This motion passed unanimously.
We will now move on to our next order of business. Action item number three is a partial waiver of board policy number 2415, high school graduation requirements to suspend service learning requirement for students graduating in 2022. May I have a motion for this item?
I move that the school board temporarily suspend the provision in board policy number 2415, high school graduation requirements, requiring that graduating students complete 60 hours of service learning for graduation from today's date until August 31st, 2022. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second.
We, this item has been moved and properly seconded. We will now hear from Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, President Hershey. Caleb Perkins, Executive Director for College and Career Readiness. I'm here on behalf of Dr. Gishis Scarlett, the Assistant Superintendent for Academics. This bar, as you heard, is to suspend for the class of 2022 the service learning requirement requiring 60 hours of service learning for our graduation requirement. We developed this bar in close collaboration with the board, and we want to thank the SSCNI Committee as well as the executive committee for all the guidance that you've given in October and November. We wanted to point out that this is something that is a local graduation requirement. It is something that the board has suspended throughout the pandemic for the class of 2020 and the class of 2021. And after, again, a careful analysis, engaging with a number of school leaders as well as community members that I think have reached out to both you and to us, we are bringing back to you this, this bar to request another temporary suspension for the class of 2022 around the specific requirement. We have included in the bar, as always, an engagement analysis and a racial equity analysis which indicates that students of color for this from educational justice are most likely to benefit from this waiver. And we do agree and strongly recommend the approval of this, given the need for our students to focus on their academic and social needs going on during this year. As has been brought up at SSCNI, this does warrant a larger conversation around the future of this requirement. But again, this bar is only for this year and for the class of 2022, and we appreciate your consideration. And again, in consultation with the board, we're bringing you for intro and action so that schools can plan accordingly their second semester with as much time as possible. Thank you very much.
So I see that we have Director Hampson. Do any other directors have questions at this time? Please take it away, Director Hampson.
Will there be capacity this year to look at this policy? It, it may be that it's something the board may, decides to take action on regardless. The policy is quite dated, in my opinion, and certainly did not have a particular equity framework in mind when it was developed. I know it's a lot of work to put together these bars and would... So two, two-part question. One, what, if any, plans to engage around this? I, I do want to know what students think. If not, then any perspective about how you would see it, how staff would see this moving forward to come to a conclusion about the policy? And then, I lied, it's three parts. The, are there students who have completed a service requirement? Some students, we're making this partway through the, we've already started the second quarter. So some students have already
That's true.
completed this. I feel a little bit bad for them. I don't know if you want to address that, but those are my thoughts.
I think on the last part, our understanding is that the school leaders and counselors and others have weighed that, that downside and said that the, the upside is much, much, you know, outweighs that significantly. We could also reach out to those school staff members to see if there's other ways to, to honor that work. I, I don't know what that would be off the top of my head. In terms of the larger conversation, I think we would be interested in having that larger conversation. I think the challenge, as you alluded to, is in terms of doing enough engagement. I think Director Rankin has indicated an interest as well as the, you know, and the, the, it gets into a number of other areas of interest, things like work-based learning, internships, you know, other areas that we've been engaging and really trying to devote our energies to. So I, I believe staff, including myself, would be interested in having that conversation. I think the level of engagement would need to be determined to see if we could actually resolve it by the end of this year.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Hampson. Do we have any other questions at this time? Okay. Is it a question?
A con.
Go for it.
I just wanted to add a little bit more context of, of the conversations that we've had around this policy in committee. And, and also, you know, that came about during the conversation of, do we approve this waiver again this year as we have in other years? And so just to tag on to what Vice President Hampson said, there is, there, there has not, as far as I can tell, been any sort of update or revisiting of this requirement since it was first presented 20-something years ago? And, and there's definitely a, a lot of value to be had, I think, in having a conversation about what the intent actually is and who has access to the opportunities, how we sort of rate activities as being qualifying or not, and all that kind of record-keeping. And I know that for, I, I know that there's data on waivers of past years and what students have requested waivers and demographic data related to that. And so I, I just wanted to just highlight that, I guess, that we've talked about it and that it is on in conversations about next year's work plan for student services, curriculum, and instruction. It's there as sort of a placeholder with the hopes that we can address it. And it does overlap with quite a few, few other things. So more to come, I suppose.
Wonderful. Okay, so any other questions on this item before we move to the vote? All right, seeing none, Ms. Wilson Jones?
Director Song Moritz?
Aye.
Vice President Hampson?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director Sargu?
Aye.
President Hershey?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
To everyone, so that completes our action items. Let's get ready to move into intro items. Okay, so the first intro item is approval of courses with new content as defined by Superintendent Procedure 2026 SP. Who will we be hearing from? Mr. Perkins?
Thank you again. Again, Caleb Perkins, Executive Director for College and Career Readiness. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to present this exciting board action report. As we heard from public testimony, there's a lot of interest in the specific courses we bring to you tonight. We bring this bar annually so that we can add courses to inform the registration and course enrollment process for 2223 that begins in January and February. And as context, every year, we review the course catalog to ensure, in particular, in light of our strategic plan and our focus on students of color further from educational justice, that we're making efforts to improve quality, equitable access, and ensuring offerings are actually sequenced towards readiness. So with this, as was noted by President Hershey, that this per 2026, we bring all courses that are deemed having new content to the board for their approval, and that involves five courses this year: Arabic I and II, Black Studies World History III and IV, Philippine X American US History XI that we heard in public testimony, and Women of Color Comparative Literature and Composition. We're excited about all of these course offerings. This comes from collaborative effort from the community, from educators, and from our central staff. And in each of these cases, as you can see in the racial equity analysis, we believe these will be helpful in enhancing pathways to graduation and providing new ways to include diversity and inclusion in our courses and ensuring that our courses are in fact serving our students of color further from educational justice. Just a little bit more specificity on each of these courses, as was shared at SSCNI. Arabic I and II came from a collaboration and interest from East African and Somali families, specifically from Denny and Chief Self. The, obviously, the Philippine X US History course, you heard about some of the involvement. And I just want to thank Devon Cabalila and many of the other community groups that helped put that together along with Alex Ray, our Program Manager for Ethnic Studies. Black Studies World History III and IV, I want to thank Anita Koyer-Moomba, our, our Program Manager for Black Studies, along with Leta Stewart and the other team members that worked on that. And then Women of Color Comparative Literature and Composition, I want to thank Amy Noji from Roosevelt High School as well as Kathleen Vasquez in, in putting that together, among many others. And we are thrilled to be, have the opportunity to bring this to you. During our SSCNI Committee, there was a robust discussion about how not only to add these courses but to ensure enrollment in these courses, and we thank you for that input. And we assume we will continue those conversations because that is critical. And with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Perkins. Do we have any questions? Director Harris?
You alluded to our robust conversation, and my hope is, is given our tech improvements, given our additional comfort, if you will, with online learning, that these courses can be offered system-wide, so it doesn't matter what your zip code is, to have an opportunity to take these courses. And as I believe it was Director Sargu said, how do we sign up? If, if we're going to cast our nets wide, and we, we heard some really compelling testimony tonight from folks of the Philippine X community, if we could do these online, we could do a great service to this whole community, no?
So the, the wonderful piece about this, of course, is that we started in the, I mean, one brief, a small silver lining of the pandemic is that that enabled us to do some experimentation, starting even last year, with our Black History US History course that, that Alex Ray actually taught. And we had 60 students from across the district participate. The question is, how do we do more of that? And I think that's exactly the right question. I think some of the challenges that, and now students have come back, is that those were offered during Zero Period and Eighth Period, which just, it, there's more logistics when kids are both attending in person and doing things virtually. Can we solve for those logistics? I, I believe we can, and I definitely hear the, the interest in the board in doing so, and we share that interest.
Can we solve for those logistics? I I believe we can, and I definitely hear the the interest in the board in in doing so, and we share that interest.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Perkins. All right, we will now be moving to intro item number two, BEX 5, Approval of Budget Transfer and Authorization of the Superintendent to Execute the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for the Lincoln High School Phase Two Project. Mr. Podesta, take it away.
Thank you, Fred Podesta, Assistant Superintendent of Operations. So as the board is aware, we reopened Lincoln High School in the fall of 2019. And the, there was always been a Phase Two plan for the project of to modernize and do seismic improvements and to make improvements to the buildings on the east side of campus, the gymnasium, the Performing Arts Center, and some spaces used for career and technical education. This board action does, accomplishes two things. It adjusts the budget to the actual scope of the work now that it's fully understood. And it allows us to amend our Alternative Public Works contract to fix the guaranteed maximum price. So our big pro, the district is allowed by the state in the public works process to enter into what are called general contractor construction management contracts. And those are different than most of the construction projects you hear about in that we hire the contractor upfront to help us manage the project. So the board authorized that contract in December of 2020 at a price, and then we bring the contractor on board during design and while the project is fully scoped out. And then we're required by the rules that govern Public Works in the state of Washington to then amend the contract with approval by the board for the actual final fixed price, maximum fixed price that the GCCM will deliver for us. So this action does that. And then the, as you know, Lincoln High School, these buildings were built in the 50s. As we were investigating the modernization of those buildings and some of the seismic improvements in the rest of the campus, there was some hazardous materials discovered and some additional scope in terms of improving the building envelope to mitigate water intrusion, moisture intrusion, and some access improvements that really need to be made at the gym and the Performing Arts Center. So we adjusted the budget accordingly using the program contingency for BEX 5. So this really allows us to move forward at this point. Happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay, do directors have any questions at this time? Director Rivera Smith?
Oh, thank you, Assistant Superintendent Podesta. I had a couple of questions when we saw the site committee. I don't know if it's coming from. When we talk about the site committee, I had a couple of questions regarding the bar. Yeah, the tiny one about your title being the old title still, it's not a big deal, but in the, let me find it over here, the fiscal impact, there's, I just felt there was confusion where it says first in the third line as right above additional funding. I was taking. One about the transfer, the $1.5 billion transfer. It notes it twice in there, so. Question that two times it's taken. That was my.
Thank you. We'll go back and make sure that those corrections get made.
And then those pages are still not legible. Later in the bar. It's at the end of it now, I believe. That big sheet. I can't remember it is, but the last page, basically. There, but it's still not legible. Did we figure out how to make that legible?
Not reproduced at this side. That's probably in your packet. We make sure we post before this goes for action, the larger sheet that will be more legible.
Yeah, I appreciate it being here for transparency, but for that if we cannot read it, so yeah. If you can figure out how to get that legible, that would be great. No other questions. Thank you.
You, Director Rivera Smith. Any other questions before we move on to the next item? I do not. Okay, so we are now moving to intro item number three, BEX 4, BTA 4, OSPI K3 Class Size Reduction Grant Resolution 2021-22-5, Final Acceptance of Contract P5177 with Lighting Construction Incorporated for Daniel Bagley Elementary School Modernization and Edition Project.
Thank you. Again, these, these are our favorite board actions to bring from capital, the final acceptance of a completed project. This project renovated the 1930s-era Bagley Building. They modernized building systems and added eight classroom addition and converted some other space into classroom space. The contractor successfully completed the scope of work. The project was completed in time for the 2021 school year. Of course, we didn't utilize the building as we expected that year, but it's occupied this year, and the building is performing well. And we're glad to put this one behind us.
We are also glad to put this one behind us. Any questions from director? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Podesta. We greatly appreciate it. All right, we are now going to double back one last time to committee reports and then board comments. I will say that I'm not going to hold you to two minutes, but please keep it concise. With that being said, let's go ahead and kick it off with the SSC and I Committee. Do you have comments you'd like to share?
Yep, sorry, just for clarification, we're doing many reports?
Yeah.
And then?
We're going to board comments after that.
So is the committee and liaison assignment?
Oh, did I miss that? I'm sorry. Oh, it's a subcategory. Okay, yes, yes. Now I'm remembering. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, yeah, let's do that now. And this will be largely a quick discussion, if I'm not mistaken. This is ju, we're not assigning committees here and now. I am hearing if there is interest in these particular committees. So let me see. Do we have a list in talking points or is it on the agenda, Ms. Wilson Jones? Okay. Okay. It is on the agenda. Oh, it's a separate dot. Thanks, Superintendent Jones. Okay, so. All right, so the quick question on process here. Are we only talking about the liaisons or are we also getting feedback on what committees folks would like to serve on currently?
For me. President Hersi, the process the board has used in the past is to go director by director
Okay.
and just ask folks to share the committees and any liaison positions they're interested in. You might wish to review the opportunities first if directors need that.
Absolutely. Thank you for that clarity. All right, we'll start with Director Harris at the far end of the dais. What are you interested in?
I live for SSC and I and the Scholarship Committee, and I have enjoyed my participation with the city with respect to the FAP levy. Thank you, sir.
Director Rankin?
I would, excuse me, very much like to continue in my role as Chair of the Student Services Curriculum and Instruction Committee. And I'm actually very interested in jumping from the Operations Committee to the Audit and Finance Committee. And I also have great interest and feel like it aligns and makes sense with other stuff in being the board legislative liaison.
Thank you very much. Director Hampson?
I would be very excited to return to the Audit and Finance Committee as a Chair of that committee. As far as the liaison roles, I would be very interested in the state-federal WADA liaison position and the tribal nations liaison positions. I did want to note, but I had appointed Director Rankin as the WIAA representative this last year. That's an underappreciated role. I am, was elected as the, as a representative to the WADA. I forget the name of the committee. It's the Inter-Athletic Committee, which is a different role than the WIAA representative. My personal opinion is there should, we need to understand more about WIAA, like that they actually cover music and theater. So I I think it's probably better to have a separate person.
Okay.
But it's easy for me to do, given that I'm already in that
Right.
role, but I also would encourage as many board members as possible to understand more about athletics in our state and how that plays out in our district and access. So. And then as far as Council of Great City Schools, I'm happy to continue in whatever capacity you, as President, need me to play, whether it's as the representative or just subbing when you can't make it.
Wonderful. Thank you for that feedback. Superintendent Jones, do you want me to give you any more responsibility? Director Sargeau?
I would be honored and interested to serve on the Student Services Curriculum and Instruction Committee. In terms of liaisons, I would be interested. I think there can be more than one Council of Great City Schools. I'm interested in knowing more about the WIAA. Having, being the mom of former athletes and watching the leadership of that organization not behave in the way that you would expect adults to behave. I'm not willing to work with somebody if that's the same person who's still not behaving like an adult, to be quite honest. I don't know. This was a long time ago. I don't know who's still there. But I would be interested because that organization sorely needs some training around equity and what it means to serve a diverse group of students in a way that's equitable. I would entertain anything that doesn't have to do with money. There are other board members who are experts in the finance arena. So I'm hoping, but my my deepest interest is in curriculum instruction. And I am committed to making student-focused outcomes governance work for our district.
Fantastic. Thank you. Director Rivera Smith?
Thank you. What am I? Can you hear me okay? Okay, great. Yeah, I would, I would very much like to be on the Operations Committee and happy to chair, as I have been doing for my interim role. I am interested, whatever sounds like a good one, is in the Student Services Curriculum Instruction Committee. I'm going to have to duke it up for that one, but I understand that, you know, there's a lot of people to base, so that's my other interest. Yeah, yeah, that's why, yeah, so I guess it's cool. It's fine. I almost forgot about that one. Yes, thank you. Yeah, I'll be there. And for liaison roles, I have the BEX, the Capital Change Order, which I'm happy to stay on unless somebody else wants to compensate me for it. Those are, those have been great. And I also very, very much enjoy my Head Start Liaison, Head Start Program role. And I've got a certain relationship with the staff there, so if you can stay there, I, if I, if I can follow up for that. And it looks like that sounds good to me. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Director Rivera Smith, Director Song Moritz. What can we give you to do?
Yes, I respectfully request to be on the Audit and Finance Committee and the Operations Committee. Those were my interim assignments and I'm happy to lend my finance background to those committees. Relatedly, I see that there's two school board directors that can serve on the Capital Programs Oversight Committee. I'm interested in that role and would potentially be happy to serve that with Director Rivera Smith. Yesterday, I, along with Professor, President Hersi and Dr. Jones, attended a meeting for Mayor Left Harrell's transition team. And I I'm interested in continuing some of the conversations that we had yesterday, so I would be interested in being the board's representative for FPP. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate your feedback. I'm sure that I'm going to be able to entertain much, if not all of this. But official committee reports will be emailed or shared in whatever appropriate format. So, yes, Director Hampson?
I believe Friday, the Council of Great City Schools is putting out their list of cohorts that are going to be open. And so that will be something that you'll want to have folks consider as well, meaning the same opportunity that I had for different, like there's one for a new board member, I believe, as well as the president cohort, which is the one that I did last year. So there, those, and those are very time-intensive.
Yeah.
So just want to make that note that there will be some other opportunities you can give to folks in that regard. And Julia hopefully will be doing it as well.
Awesome. Thank you for that, and thank you for highlighting. Yes, much work to be done, and you know what they say about many hands. Okay, so now, I don't think we need to take any additional action on that. Let's go ahead and move into committee reports, and we will begin with SSC and I.
Thank you. Let's see, I closed my laptop. We, the SSC and I Committee met last week. We discussed some items that we have heard about already today. And an update is a specific topic I would like to flag for folks that may not have been able to join us for committee or or see the minutes is our continuing work around increasing inclusionary practices. We will be, I guess, keep an eye out for upcoming policy work to increase inclusive language in some of our existing policies. And there's also, we discussed, there's a current task force between district staff and SEA, and there are a couple of family representatives on there as well to examine the current program model or service model for special education. And so they're looking at that. We also have, I am very grateful for the support of some folks from Pachelle's team who are doing some research into best practices and models from from other districts and other parts of the country. And so I really look forward to bringing work from those two conversations together and thinking about how we can do do better in inclusive practices. And I also just want to make sure to say, while I have the opportunity, that inclusion is not a special education initiative. It's a general education initiative. So this does not just apply to teachers who serve special education students and students who receive special, special education services. Inclusion is something that is for everybody, and it's a mindset shift and policy, all, all kinds of everything shift, but I'm very excited that we have board support and staff work is aligning to really make some progress in that area. Our district and our state are are pretty far away from best practices in terms of serving students with disabilities in inclusive settings, and I'm just really excited about about seeing that, being part of seeing that, seeing that and making that progress. So if that's something you're interested in, definitely keep an eye on that work going into, or kicking off the new year. That's really probably the the biggest thing we're talking about. And of course, the excitement around the new course offerings that we heard about this this evening. That was a, and thank you so much to everybody who came out in support and took the time to write us. It's really critical to support our students in this way and let them learn about themselves and each other, and so clear that this means a lot to the, to learn about themselves and each other. And, um, so clear that this means a lot to the, to the broader community as well. And so that was, um, just a great part of, of committee this past week. And I can't think of anything else off the top of mind.
Thank you very much. We will now go to the operations committee.
Thank you. Um, yeah, we had our operations committee meeting on December 2nd. And, um, we, we started with our work plan. We updated it to remove, um, items related to, um, board policy H13, which the board had, um, eliminated in a previous action. We had our capital programs monthly summary reports. We had two because Melissa had not presented them, uh, the month before because of year end activity. So we had two of them. Um, and each month Melissa Kohn presents those to us. Um, it's a dashboard that reflects all the financial activity within the capital program. And, uh, so this month we saw that, um, for August and September both. And we found that, we heard about how, you know, she does a magnificent job explaining it every month. And it's amazing, um, how much she gets in there. We saw that our capital fund is healthy. Um, as of, well, as of August, it was, um, 236.8 million. As of September, it was at 243.3 million. Um, Melissa explained some of the overages that we saw were not to be worried about. They were just, um, we talked, I think one of our, one of our introduction items was about a transfer. We make transfers, transfers, um, from other programs. And so, um, those hadn't been done by, by posting, but, uh, we're looking good with 21 million still available at the end of the fiscal year. Um, then we had two items for action that we saw today in show. So, uh, great meeting. Our next one is next month. And I, I showed a date in front of me, but early January, I assume. Um, January 13th. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, this month I had the distinct honor of chairing two committees. Thank you, Director Hampson, for that. I am very excited to not do that next month. But for the executive committee, uh, much of what we approved in the way of the school year was present on today's agenda. We also had, um, some pretty robust updates on external board communications and student focused outcomes governance. For audit and finance, uh, we reviewed the renewal of the teacher diversity contract again, as you saw on the agenda earlier in tonight's meeting. And we had, uh, our quarterly audit meeting, uh, where we received the internal audit update and response. And I just want to give a huge shout out to Andrew Medina, who, uh, lifts up an immense amount of work. I highly doubt that Andrew is listening to this, so if you see him in the hallway, pat him on the back. Um, seriously. Maybe, yeah, probably not, actually. So, uh, or actually probably so. But again, just putting the focus back on Andrew, a lot of the work that his office does, uh, really keeps the district accountable and helps us know how we need to improve in a number of ways. It is not exactly exciting work, but it is critical. So again, Andrew, if you are or aren't listening, we really appreciate you. Okay, we will now move to board comments. So again, not gonna hold you to two minutes, but a 7:30. So anybody, any volunteers, I am definitely willing to go full second grade teacher on all of you. If I need to. Going once, going twice. Director Rankin, you're up first.
I usually, I was, okay. Um. I, I was just gonna say, I'm just gonna say, everybody is tired and, um, and I feel hopeful sitting up here with you all in ways I do not feel when I am when there's other stuff going on. And so just thank you to, uh, my colleagues and to everyone and anyone who is an educator, supports an educator, is a student, is a parent. Um, we, I don't need to rehash. We all know that there's some really rough, difficult stuff happening um, out in our communities and it's in for our kids right now. And so I'll just say that I hope, uh, the winter break can bring some relief and rest and restoration. And, um, and just, yeah, have a, have a safe and restful holiday. Period.
Period. Thank you. Anyone else, any volunteers, I will call you. If you don't want to, just say I have no comments at this time. Yeah. Director Rivera Smith?
Um, thank you, everybody. Um, I, I usually like to respond to our speakers, um, only one of which is still here. He's sticking it out, um, but the sun might be online. Um, either way, thank you to the students, definitely who spoke. We had, I think we had four different schools, Franklin, Lincoln, Chief South and Ballard. Students from all those schools. It was so great to hear them and, and hear their voices and, and their great messages. Um, I, again, I'm trying to be quick here. Um, I also, I, I'll just touch on to you. I had a committee meeting on Saturday and the topic was about school safety and a lot of things going on right now. And, um, and that is something that I know that we, uh, are working very hard on. Superintendent Jones and, um, staff are all working with our partners and the state police to figure out what it is, you know, what, what our role is to, to do, what our role is to, to make it and help with these efforts. Um, and it's all about student health. And I, one speaker we had tonight, you know, kind of said the phrase I've had in my head this last two weeks about all this is like, behavior is communication. So what are our students telling us? What's happening? What is that unmet need, uh, that with all of our money we're putting in SEL and all of our attention there? What are we missing? What's, what, what's, what's still, um, a need that they have that, that students are behaving the way they are and and acting and doing the things. And, and some of this isn't students, right? Some of these threats are outside of our community. Um, but they're still affecting our schools. And every time this happens, it affects student learning and affects our staff who are, are also traumatized, um, when they have threats against their schools and their safety. So, um, I just implore us to have that conversation. Um, I appreciate the parent who was working with some educators and maybe he talked to us and it sounds like, uh, Rocky's gonna be looking into that, which is awesome. Um, cause you know, we're, I think we're gonna try anything, right? We're willing to do this because this is about the student safety, which has to be first, has to be paramount in everything we do. Um, we can't teach students, we can't, they can't learn if they're not safe and they don't feel safe. So, um, we're, we're having those conversations. I hope we continue to do that. Um, and I will end it there, I guess, for tonight. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Any comments, Director Harris?
First, how much I appreciate everybody in this building and all 104 of our buildings and all of the bus drivers and, and the whole system. It's, we can say it a thousand times and still not get through what a wild, frightening, stressful couple of years it's been. Um, but seeing those young people tonight, that'll keep me going another six months, easy. Because, um, because that's why I'm here. Um, and before anybody wants to try ever to speak for me or to suggest that Sabrina Burr doesn't have a right to say what she absolutely has a right to say. Please don't bother. I respect the hell out of her. I respect her right to stand up and tell her truth. I got no problem with that. And, uh, there have been some folks lately speaking for me. And with all due respect, they can pound sand. And I hope everybody has a phenomenally good holiday and gets outside, even in the rain. Because we've all been cooped up and it's just too dark getting up in the morning and coming home in the dark. And, um, whether you got dogs or kittens, and I still want a school board dog and cat page. Cause we're actually real people. I know that some people don't believe that, but I think we can have a sense of humor. Anyway, it's an honor and it's a privilege and, uh, be safe and be happy. Thank you.
Thank you. I can guarantee you that Kodak is ready for his 15 minutes of fame. Um, any Director Summits?
Um, I just want to start by thanking, um, the Filipino community for coming tonight and sharing really powerful testimony and for the emails. Um, just really so excited to see this opportunity for our students. Um, you know, in particular, Dr. Decano's testimony about his father. And, um, as a daughter of immigrants, um, what really makes this country special is our hard fought freedoms. And I'm really excited that our students will have an opportunity to learn about the contributions from our Filipino community, in particular, Dr. Decano's. Uh, on Monday, I held my first community meeting, so I want to thank the parents that, uh, came and, uh, spoke with me directly. Um, some of the issues that they brought to my attention are ones that, um, I think we're all familiar with. Um, namely sexual assault, um, concerns around gun violence prevention in our community. Um, and so I just want to acknowledge that, um, I, I, it's very helpful for me to hear directly from the parents and what they're seeing and experiencing. Um, I also want to thank, uh, Dylan, who heard me and delivered what I was asking for. Um, this is really, this is so exciting to me. Um, the reason why I think data is important is because it gives us the scale and the nature of our problem. And we can work with this. Um, we know what the work that needs to be done when we have the data. And so I'm really excited to work with Dylan and our students and our staff, um, to advance this. Um, and finally, I just want to, um, wish our staff, students and family a restful winter break. Thank you.
Director Sargent, you have any comments?
I actually am, I have been reflecting on what's happening nationally with school boards. Um, particularly for, uh, black and indigenous school board members, the threats. I have a colleague in Oregon who has a police escort because he's been threatened with lynching. Um, yes, in 2021. Uh, the idea that volunteer positions have to have a police escort because their lives are threatened for doing a volunteer job is reprehensible. Um, I think we live, at least in this district, I have observed, um, an example of how we should all be engaging in civic discourse. Um, particularly in discourse that centers students. Um, so I'm thankful for the people that signed up for testimony and I'm thankful for their passion. It is okay to be passionate. Um, it is also possible to be passionate and respectful. We don't have to always agree on every single point. Um, but I do believe we have to respect one another. Um, and we have to give opportunity for voices of people who are the most marginalized. So I, I feel honored to be, um, serving in this district because so far what I've seen is we are modeling what it looks like to engage in civil discourse and engage in things we are passionate about when it comes to all of our children. Um, so I thank you, Sabrina, for coming tonight and engaging in civil discourse and speaking truth to power. Um, I want to thank the students who came again and spoke about sexual assault. Uh, we all know how the last board meeting, uh, ended and it ended with my comments being completely taken out of context. And for the record, I have had a conversation, uh, an hour plus long conversation, uh, with the writer, um, who was extremely receptive. I'm excited to support them in their work. Um, but real damage was done. Uh, when we're talking about sexual assault, those types of, of conversations should be handled with care and concern. Um, I don't regret making my very public statement. I do not regret it. Um, I do think it's unfortunate that my comments weren't, weren't held in context. And that said, um, this is something we can do. Right? The data, no surprise to me, right? I have always said line up 75, in, in this case, pregnant women. Uh, line up 175 will raise their hand that they have been, uh, the victim of sexual assault. The data proves that, right? It's no different than it was 25 years ago, sadly. So as we enter this holiday season, I ask that we keep those whose pain and suffering we cannot see. There are so many in our community who are struggling for food, who are struggling for shelter, um, who are struggling to have their basic common humanity acknowledged. And so while we go about doing the, the work of school board members, we cannot forget those people whose voices don't come to our community meetings, right? Who don't feel welcome and invited. And so I hope in 2022 that we will come back ready to exclusively center students. That's why we were, we're elected. The voters elected us to be the union for our children.
Thank you, Director Sargent. Director Hampson?
That's what I get for not speaking up sooner. I gotta go after Michelle and those amazing last words. Uh, I, I, I do want to thank, uh, Emma Madison Whitecrow for her letter and for speaking today. The month of November is always a difficult month for native people. Thanksgiving is always a very difficult time for native people. Our staff here at SPS do everything they can to help shift the narrative towards the actual truth about the history of this country and the, uh, place of native people in that history. But it's a hard time to go to school. It, it, it's, uh, any US history is, class is often a hard time for any marginalized student. Um, but particularly black and native students whose history goes so far back and is so poorly represented. And, uh, I know that at any time that a student or the child of a parent or caregiver experiences a, a standard pilgrims and Indians story about Thanksgiving, it's disappointing to say the least, but particularly because we have such robust state and district mandated curriculum that is available to our teachers. And, and yet those things continue to happen. So we, we have some important conversations to have about what's, what is the board's role in making sure that, you know, we approved some important, uh, curriculum tonight. And it's not entirely clear to me what our role is in approving and, and mandating curriculum. And I, I know this, the, historically, the board has struggled to be effective in that way and to do so in a way that empowers the superintendent to make sure that that monumental task and very expensive task of providing the tools for staff to have, but then also making sure that they are trained, which by and large they have been when it comes to since time immemorial, but then also making sure that they use it rather than, um, going a different pathway in a way that, that then ultimately is extremely damaging to students. So that's a, that's a hard, uh, conversation. I hope that over the course of this year, we can gain, gain some clarity on our role uh, when it comes to curriculum, uh, and how we support the superintendent in that. As far as, uh, one thing that I would like, ask my fellow board members to think about, um, if you would, so that we can talk together about it, this idea, the, the things, the lack of safety in our buildings. And, and this is sadly ubiquitous throughout the country. The experience is lack of safety among school board members, lack of, but more importantly, lack of safety among our students, whether it's sexual assault or, uh, what we're now being heard, referred to as behavior. And that for me is really problematic because I believe that it's a form of communication that our students are using to let us know that things are not okay. And I am seeing the gap between adults and, and young people grow wider as things become more intense and, and they are about to because Omicron or Omicron, however you want to say it, is at our doorstep. And we're gonna have to be ever more diligent and, and the impact on students and their readiness to compromise and do whatever they have to do so that they can have prom, which they absolutely deserve to have and need to have to look forward to. How do we, within the confines of, of what we're required to do by the state so that we can get that revenue? How do we lift some of the weight off of the shoulders of our young people so that they can so that those quote unquote behaviors aren't, aren't the sole source of communication that they feel like folks will maybe hear? Uh, I think it's really critical that we as a board figure out, how do we communicate to families, to the adults in our students' lives? To help them better understand. And our, and our teachers' union is key in this too, because I know our teachers are, are experiencing this in real time with their students and our administrators as well. And, and I, I think the gap is, is growing rather than shrinking. And I know uh, Superintendent Jones has made clear how concerned he is about it. Weeks ago had men, made comments about student safety and you know, we, we need to admit that we don't know the answers and, and, but somehow we got, we, we need to start the conversation. And we need to start the conversation with our communities. Because every adult and every student's lives has a really critical role to play. Uh, I'm, I'm sure, uh, I know a lot of us are feeling pretty helpless right now and we need to feel helpful and um, I don't have any answers, but I hope that we can come back after the holiday and have a conversation about a, a positive role that this board could play. And, and I'm so grateful we have a teacher at our helm to help us do that. So um, with that, uh, Pina Gigi, my gratitude to everyone for their commitment and their hard work during this year. And I hope everyone gets some rest over this break and I will turn it back over to you, President Hersi.
Thank you. Um, I'll keep my comments brief. I was on the phone with my dad yesterday, just saw him about all the stuff that we're doing, good old Roosevelt. Um, and I was like, we're doing, you know, this transition to student focused outcomes governance. I told him about some stuff I'm doing at work, personal life and all that. And the first thing after listening to me go on for about 15 minutes, it sounds like you need to get somewhere and sit down. You can tell that there are a few households where that's a very common, a very common statement. And I mean, I think that that's just really good advice, especially as we're getting close to this respite is we all just for a moment need to get somewhere and sit down and just be still and just, just take a minute. I, I really want to acknowledge our educators. Um, you know, it, it pains me every day that I am not in my classroom. I miss my students like crazy, but what I, what I really just want to say is that for our teachers who, as Vice President Hampson put it, who are experiencing all of these things in real time, right? So like, we've had this conversation. We're up on the balcony looking at the dance floor. And I don't think nobody dancing right now. You know what I'm saying? I think a lot of folks are, are exhausted. We've been at school for like 20 minutes. We've still got like nine, nine more months to go. And so if you're listening out there and you're a parent, call your teacher, call your child's teacher, tell them thank you. If you're listening out there and you're an educator and nobody has told you thank you today, thank you. And we see it. I think the difference is we're not experiencing it in the same way, but we see it. And if our teachers are exhausted, I can only imagine what that means for our students. And so as we, as we come to this brief respite for us as a leadership team, I just want to say, A, thank you for the way that y'all have been showing up lately. Uh, personally, stepping into a role as the only man on this board and as the only person sub, no longer sub 30, I just had a birthday. Um, it, I, I find hey, hey, hey. Um, I am reminded often of, and, and reflect often on, on the, the immense pride and joy and humble nature that I need to bring to just support y'all in whatever it is y'all want to do on the board. And however I can be a resource to y'all, please do not hesitate to reach out. But what, what, the reason that I say that is because, you know, we've been throwing around the term, we're the most diverse board in Seattle schools history. We're, we're currently trying to fact check that to make sure that's accurate, but you can say it here first. Um, and with that comes a ton of responsibility. Like there are a ton of opportunities and there are also a ton of opportunities for pitfalls and equity detours and not listening to the youth. I think this has been exacerbated by the amount of violence that we're seeing throughout our city, most notably on the South End and the Central District. And the school district has a huge role to play in that. I think in addition to that, we as leadership have a bigger role to play in the conversations that are being had, but, but more importantly, the action that needs to be taken to do everything that we need to do to keep our kids safe, right? And we've been keeping our kids safe in a, in, in a myriad of ways. Whether it be safe from COVID, safe from gun violence, safety from, you know, all of the atrocities that some of our children are still experiencing in our buildings, both physically and mentally. And unless we are well and take the time to make sure that we are well, the system will not be well. So as we are at this, this opportunity to take pause and to take breath and to be with our families, please, I'm asking you as a friend and as a colleague, take advantage of that. Because the moment we get back here in January, it is all cylinders go. All cylinders go. And I have high expectations for everyone, as I know everyone does for everyone else on this board. But if we are going to throw the term around that we are the most diverse board in history, if we are going to throw the term around that we are, are heading in a new direction for Seattle Public Schools through student focused outcomes governance, can't just be talk. We got to show up, got to show out. So take this opportunity to get somewhere and sit down. Cool. Thank y'all.
Hey, Fran, oh, wait, wait, before you do that, before you do that, before you do that really quick, I wanted to just read a quote that relates to what you were just talking about in our work of the new year. Um, Bell Hooks passed away today. And um, and so, you know, may she rest in peace, rest in power. But I, I, a quote of hers is, "Love is an action, never simply a feeling." And so as we rest and recoup, we got to come back with that love in action.
Oh, thank you for that. Thank you for that. So with that reminder, we uh, stand, this meeting stands adjourned at 7:54 PM. Have a good break.